Okay, it's 6:30. Today is January 17th. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardner Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to go over a few of the ground rules by which this board operates under before we start the actual cases. In Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in the sequence in which they appeared in the public notice. I am going to make some changes out of this meeting tonight so we can speed it up a little bit. All hearings shall be open to the public and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his own behalf or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutters to the property present shall be heard. Any other interested parties will be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision within 90 days after the public hearing. All three members of the board must vote in favor for the variance or special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of this board is provided for in the zoning act. The information is available in the office of city clerk. No variance or special permit or extension, modification, renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that, excuse me, 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry of deeds. The burden for supporting the variance or special permit rests with the applicant or representative of the applicant. The board requests that each person identifying himself or herself has to name and address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearings are to my left, Mel Cornet, to my right, David Antea, and to the far right is Randy Haglund. This is the three member of board. But we're going to be moving a couple of members right away, so, excuse me, Mr. Antea will be sitting in my place. This meeting will be taped. Thank you. Does anyone object to the taping of this meeting? There's no objections. One request is please silence your cell phones. It will not interrupt the course of the meeting. Okay, and I'm going to read the agenda. It's January 17th, 2023, 6:30. The announcement is any person to make a video or audio recording of an open meeting or session or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents referenced or used during the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the clerk. All documents shall become part of the official record of the meeting. Is anyone planning, excuse me, to make any recordings of this meeting? No, thank you. Okay, the agenda. This case, 1001-2022, it's a continuance variance for Zero Clark Street. Order of remand from the courts. I'm not going to go through the whole description, I'll just hit the highlight. Second case is 11-01-2022, a continuance special permit for 60 Wellness Street. Convert an office building to seven residential units. Third case, 11-02-2022, a continuance special permit for 440 West Broadway. Construct operation of a wireless communication facility. A 150-foot tall monopole will be erected. Next case is 0101-2023. It's a special permit, 20 Graham Street, to convert accessory building to a fifth dwelling unit. Next case, 1002-2023, special permit, Zero Kinzer Drive requested an extension of existing special permit case 20190101. Last case, 0103-2023, a special permit, excuse me, it's going to be a variance, 163-165 Pine Street. Amending to existing special permit case 20220101. Okay, the first case we're going to start with is going to be the Kinzer Drive case. This special permit was granted several years ago. And due to National Grid not working or approving his plan, he has been forced to ask for several extensions. We have extended him several times in the past. So it's before the board tonight to grant another extension, and we have the ability to grant him a three-year extension under the special permit. So in order to facilitate him and not have to come back every six months or a year, we're going to entertain a three-year extension. Nothing has changed from the original application. He's just waiting for National Grid to say, sort of put your shovel in there and go. So I'm going to ask many members, Randy and Mel, do you have any comments or questions regarding this?
No, I think we heard it all pretty much last November. You know, the challenges of permitting right now in the state with the public utilities. You know, Mr. Unger was, you know, pretty good in his explanation last year. There may be somebody in the audience that may have questions, but I don't have anything right now.
Yeah, I agree with Randy. There's, I don't have any further questions.
And I know Mr. Unger stated when he made his quick presentation over a month ago for the extension that it's just not his. They have tied up all of central Massachusetts in any new solar fields. So that's what he's facing. I'm going to ask if any representatives of the city would like to speak regarding this request for extension.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there any abutter who would like to comment on the request for this extension? It's on Kinzer Drive down off of West Broadway near Salvador. No abutters have any questions? Any in opposition to this request? There's no opposition to this request? Okay, do I have a motion to move on granting a three-year extension to Mr. Kinzer?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion? Done? Call for vote, all those in favor of granting a three-year extension to Kinzer Drive Solar LLC, and it will be effective starting, well, it's tonight, but the 20 days will have to expire, and then it goes. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I ask about the expiration date? I think the expiration day was December 31st, so should we go two years and 15 days less or something to bring it December 31st, just for consistency's sake?
I agree. So you make it three years from the 15th?
Three years from December 31st, 2022.
December 31st.
So it'd be December 31st, 2025.
Yep. Okay. So all those in favor with now extending it back from the 31st to December? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So granted, Mr. Unger?
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, we don't see you in 2025.
Well, it's good news that there's progress at Department of Public Utilities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Unger.
Thank you for your patience with them. Okay, the next case before us is 163-165 Pine Street, and it's regarding the width of a travel lane to get to a driveway. I will read this.
I thought you were going to do the, I thought that's when you were stepping down.
I'm gonna.
Are you going to do the Rock Street?
Yeah. Okay, I don't see a write-up in here. So what I'm going to, actually, this is the case I'm going to step off of because there's either a conflict or perceived conflict, so I, excuse me, do not want to sit on it. So Mr. Antea is going to sit in, and Randy Haglund will take over as chair. I can stay right there.
Yeah, you can stay there. All right, second case this evening is, it's a request for variance. It's 163-165 Pine Street. The applicant is Jonathan Bambachi of Millennium Holdings Group, 88 Main Street, Garden of Mass. And the property is R22B, colon, 6, L, colon, 8. The owner of the property is MHG3 Fund LLC with an ownership of 163 to 165 Pine Street. This is a special permit that was issued back in 2022, in January of 2022, for the renovation of the building. And through the renovations of the building, Mr. Bambachi has determined that parking layout as was originally proposed is not going to, is not feasible or going to work. So therefore, he's seeking the variance. Mr. Bambachi, agent or attorney? Why don't you come up, Mr. Bambachi?
By the way, sitting on this case, I'm Randy Haglund, acting as chair. Mel Cornet and David Antea is the third member.
Thank you. Well, Seth, Mr. Bambachi, why don't you tell us what you've discovered and what you'd like to zoning relief for?
Yeah, so part of the special permit you guys granted us last year was to do the proposed parking plan, which was provided with nine parking spaces. If you guys need copies, I can send it back. It's 11 parking spaces, two of which were tandem. So this was the proposed plan. Once we got into actually building the surface lot, we had trouble with the hill, and it was constructed a little bit short, which ended up knocking out a couple of the parking places. So the next provided diagram is the current lot with the best layout we were able to do to get the same number of parking spots. So the idea is, you know, we lost about eight feet on the hill, and so the proposal is to turn one of the three parking spaces in the back and then add tandem parking in the front of the building, in the driveway going down, where we have about 16 feet, a little bit less than 16 feet, at the shortest distance going down the driveway. Oh, sorry, it's 18 feet going down the driveway.
Can you remind us how many units in the building?
So this was a fire building, which we bought off of the previous owner. It was abandoned for about 10 years. It was an eight unit, all of which are two-bedroom units. The building has been fully restored. Everything is done. We're in for our final permits, closing out electrical and plumbing. The last thing was that the parking lot came up short when we went to do the final inspections.
When, tell us how short, you know, in the feasibility of the construction, how short did you actually make, how short is the parking lot?
So I think we're about eight feet short.
Eight feet going to the depth of the, it's a hill, it goes like that.
Yeah, and the problem is, is the grade gets a little bit dicey. They did the best they could with the wall, but to extend the extra eight feet is about $30,000 to $50,000 to get that remaining part of the parking done. We're already into the project for a bit over a million, and we're looking to get occupancy as early as February because everything is essentially done with the exception of the parking.
You are, by code, needed, you need the 11 spaces by code?
So actually, no. So I think by code we needed, and this is where it gets a little bit challenging, by code we needed 16 spaces. You guys already granted us a variance back last year for the 11 spaces, which is why we're trying to get back to that original 11.
What's the width on the driveway that you need? And are you short on the width also?
So the width of the driveway that we need, I think, is about 18 feet, and so we're a little bit short of the width going down. It was pre-existing.
How much short?
It was originally 17'7", I think.
Yeah, so I think we're like five inches short.
Five inches?
How much of that 17'7" will be taken up by your parking spaces?
So we mapped it out today with, and so if we put the nine feet there, there is enough room for an F-150. We provided a couple of photos of two F-150s going down the driveway. They both fit without scraping the house. We do have a little bit of variance based on the drawing, is actually the driveway does dip under the deck, which allows for a couple more inches that isn't quite shown on this, but we were able to get two F-150s down and up without any interference.
So do you get any kind of emergency vehicles passed them?
So probably not. But I don't, and part of this is, I mean, it is a decent-sized hill going down. There is quite a bit of room up front, and so in the front of the building, there is a concrete slab that's about eight feet, six inches on the front, plus a sidewalk. We had originally proposed trying to get parking there, but we didn't, we weren't able to go on city land, and so there would be enough room there for a fire truck or ambulance at the front of the building, which is flat and a concrete slab.
But they couldn't get access to the rear of the building?
They couldn't get access to the rear of the building, correct.
So your revised parking proposal, what are the dimensions of the new parking spaces? Are they, has that changed? Are they still nine by 18?
They're still nine by, they're still the original nine by 18. The width remained, the width is the same, it was just the depth that was the challenge.
So the two spaces in the back that you had to eliminate because of the, the hill, moving of the wall, you proposed putting them along the retaining wall in the driveway area, which is where you show in your photograph, one of the F-150s parked.
Correct.
You got the both of them?
Yeah, okay. So I guess my question is, the retaining wall, how tall is that retaining wall?
It starts at about a foot, and then it probably slopes back to about six feet, and then it disappears.
So if a resident of the building parking in one of those two spots along the parking lot, along the driveway, they drive in like you show in your Toyota pickup here, how are they going to get out of their vehicle with a three-foot retaining wall?
They'd be able to get out on one side of the, one side of the vehicle.
So they climb it over the console, or they're backing in, or some fashion?
Or getting out at the front where there is plenty of room up front, and then parking the vehicle after that. It definitely is a, definitely is an inconvenience, which is, you know, which is what we're trying to solve. The parking on the property was a challenge from the beginning.
I recall, I was one of the original members who sat on this special permit, and I remember we had, there was some discussion about the parking and the relief and the understanding that, you know, knowing that there was a city lot down the road and that there's some other avenues, potential avenues for parking. Question, on looking at your building and on the right-hand side, is that abandoned or, I don't know if it's abandoned, building? At one point, you, I think you had mentioned you had tried obtaining or see if you could get an easement or something on that property. Are you still pursuing that, or?
We are. We're still pursuing that. It's still something that we're interested in taking over, if it makes sense.
Okay, we do have a couple of letters here that came to the board, and I'll read those into the record shortly. I'll open it to the members, other members of the board if they have questions at this point.
Yes, I do, Randy. If I'm looking on your, the one that was approved and the revised, are you, are you making parking number five? I'm curious, what are the blue squares? Are those for parking also?
Yeah, so in the next one, what I was trying to do is, I was trying to show the way we were going to dedicate the spaces to the units, and so by giving, you know, the parking space six and parking six, seven to the same unit, they'd be able to coordinate access. Like, it's not quite tandem, but the idea is by assigning, you know, obstructed spaces to, you know, the appropriate parties, they could shuffle the cards accordingly.
Okay, so on your, I'll say this is number one here, that you have that parking number five, okay, the way you have it overlapped on five and six, you have it for five. And seven's over here, but on the other sheet, you have six and six. Which one are you?
Yeah, so I think, I think the blue ones that you're referring to are probably not supposed to be there. It looks like the next version was my attempt at doing what I wanted to do, and I just forgot to delete those boxes.
Okay, so on, I'll say, the second revised that we have, you're going to have one through five, and then six would, apartment six, I gather, will have two spots. Apartment seven will have the two spots along the driveway, and then apartment eight would have the two on the other side of the house.
Correct.
Okay.
And what are the width of these parking spaces?
I believe they're all the original nine by 18.
Okay, so it looks like, yeah, nine feet is what you've lost between the building and the end of the parking spaces. Right now, it's 15 feet. It was originally proposed as 24.
And we had to put a barricade, a steel barricade at the top of the wall, which was the other foot that we lost.
For sure. Yeah, I wouldn't want to be driving down that hill and driveway, keep going. Talk to us a little bit why or how this wall got constructed, you know, eight feet closer to the building than it should have been.
I mean, part of that was when they came in, they brought the fill. It was, it was brought in with them trying to do the best they could with what was there, and then there was a little, a little problem with the way that they read the schematics. So pretty much, we lost the eight feet off of the back of the building because it was read inappropriately when they started constructing the wall. The eight feet we're missing was from the start of the parking lot versus the back of the building.
Talk to us about, I remember this being, you know, a challenge as well with snow storage and snow control. I see you moved the dumpsters to the front of the building. Dumpsters or totes? You're going to have dumpsters, I recall. I thought you had a.
Are they called totes?
So we were going to do two, two four-yard dumpsters, but then in talking to the city, we actually have another seven unit in town that the city preferred to do the totes of the dumpsters. And so we were doing the totes there, and it was actually working out better than the dumpsters. The problem we were having at the other building was it turned into a dump ground for all the neighbors by having the totes. It restricted other people coming on the property.
We're, we're on, let's see, okay, now that we're, this is going to be the official kind of layout that you have now, because six and six, seven, seven. Is snow going to be in the same as on the other sheet?
Yep, yep. So the idea would be to push the snow to the edge of the wall, and if we need to, get a loader and put it up over the wall.
Now, if your tenants are parked there, you're not going to be able to push down through and over the wall.
Correct. So we would, we would have to clear some of the snow, and then we would have to.
Coordinate getting the tenants to move their vehicles.
Which is the same way we do at some of the other lots in town.
Is, is this with number eight, for apartment eight, is the way you have it drawn, is that on someone else's property, or is that?
No, it fits on there. I don't know why that there, it was boxed over like that, but there is enough room there for.
Okay, so it's going to fit right on your property?
Yeah, that was originally proposed, I believe, as a buddy parking right there. Parking space. Mel, any, anything?
No.
No, yeah? Can I open it up? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the audience for questions, comments. Are there any representatives of the city who'd like to make a comment with regard to this application? Mr. Gene?
I don't necessarily have any comments, Mr. Chairman, but I'm here to answer any questions if anyone has any. Thank you.
All right. At this point, I'll read, and we did receive two, two letters from two city representatives, and I'll read both of them here and allow the applicant to respond if applicable. The first letter is dated January 17th, 2023. It's addressed to Mr. Raymond LaFon, Chair and ZBA Members, Gardner City Hall Annex, 115 Pleasant Street, Garden of Mass, 01440. It's regarding a variance application for 163-165 Pine Street. Says, "Dear Mr. Chairman and Members, I am writing today in support of the application for a parking variance for the property located at 163-165 Pine Street. Under Section 10 of Chapter 40 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth, a variance may be granted if, one, special circumstances relating to the location create a substantial hardship; two, the desired relief may be granted without detriment to the public good; and, three, the granting of the variance would not nullify the intent of the zoning ordinance. It is the opinion of the administration that the applicant has met these three requirements in this manner, in this matter, excuse me. Number one, special circumstance that creates a substantial hardship. Parking lot at the location has already been substantially improved by the new owner, but is restricted in size due to a retaining wall on the property. In speaking with contractors from the field of work, the removal or moving of this retaining wall would cost upwards of $30,000. This places an immediate hardship on an owner who has already invested $50,000 in an interior demolition and an additional $1.1 million in construction and renovation costs to the building. Furthermore, aside from the financial hardship, removing and moving the retaining wall would create, if the variance is not granted, the ability to rent the property in inadequate and reasonable manner would be inhibited due to the property owner having to reduce the number of tenants on location in order to meet the parking requirements. This would create further hardship to the applicant. Number two, the desired relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. It is the belief of the administration that the only way a detriment to the public good could appear in this situation is if the variance were not granted. Excuse me, just over a year ago, this property was vacant and abandoned, marked by the Fire Department with a red X, and not fit for habitation. The fact that the applicant is looking to invest in the city this substantially at this time, when more housing is definitely needed, is absolutely in line with the needs of the city and the public good. This work removes a fire hazard, fire and safety hazard, transforms blight into promise, and substantially improves the neighborhood. See before and after pictures below of exterior work, exterior work, and there's two pictures. Between the 2010 and 2020 census, between the 2010 and 2020, the US Census Bureau informed us that Gardner's population grew by 5%. This trend has only continued since then with unprecedented amount of development in the city is seeing. Put simply, Gardner needs more housing to meet the needs we are seeing in our population trend. This project promotes the public good by meeting that need, and the granting of this variance further promotes the public good by allowing this project to move forward as planned. Three, the granting of the variance, granting of the variance would not nullify the intent of the zoning ordinance. The intent of the city's zoning ordinance is to ensure that adequate parking is available to the tenants of a location. I stand, I understand that the requested variance would reduce the amount of parking at the location. However, it is the belief of the administration that this project is still in line with the spirit of the ordinance, as the applicant has shown new ways to provide parking to tenants of the location in a way that meets the needs of those who live there while still working within. in a way that meets the needs of those who live there, while still working within parameters of the site. I am aware the city engineer has raised concerns regarding the proposed new layout of the site. However, the administration believes that these are all issues that can be worked out privately between the applicant and the tenants, and should not be viewed as a detriment to the application. As the recommendations go outside the scope of these, of the three elements needed to meet for granting of a variance, these suggestions should, however, be used to guide the applicant moving forward after the variance process has taken place. I think there's more to this letter in the file. Second page.
That's all they have for ending.
This is, um, the third page. Furthermore, there is significant movement from the Commonwealth to incentivize and/or, in some cases, require municipalities to either substantially reduce, or in some cases, fully abolish all minimum parking standards. The Commonwealth has even gone so far as to now make these actions a requirement in order for certain municipalities to be eligible to receive certain grant funding. While I do not believe Gardner is at a point where this, where this should be looked at here, I do believe this variance application does fall in line with new, with new zoning laws of the Commonwealth that relate to the reduction of minimum parking standards in the city's zoning code should, should be viewed in the lines of being in conjunction with and the spirit of the Commonwealth's zoning statutes from which it derives. It is my belief and, and the belief of my administration that the granting of this variance is in the best interest of the city and its residents. Should you have any questions, please, please feel free to contact my office at any time. Respectfully submitted, Michael J. Nicholson, Mayor, City of Gardner. Thank you, Mr. Bambachi. I knew that, I saw it online earlier as a third page, I knew it was there, I just don't know why it's not in the file. Second letter we have, um, in our file, is, is from the city engineer, and it was referenced in the mayor's, um, letter. It was, uh, again, it came via email, it was, uh, from Bob Oliver, the city engineer, sent Monday, January ninth, twenty twenty-three. It was sent to, uh, Mr. Roland Jean, and the subject is ZBA Application One Sixty-three, One Sixty-five Pine Street. Roland, um, just for, point of reference, Roland Jean is the building commissioner. Roland, in looking over this variance application, I have concerns with the requested reduction in the access driveway width and the required parking maneuvering aisle width. The applicant is proposing to reduce the width of the access drive from seventeen point seven feet to eight point seven feet. A width of eight point seven feet is less than the width of a standard parking space, nine feet, and is not sufficient for an access driveway. This driveway is between concrete retaining walls and present an issue every time someone parking in one of the two proposed spaces is not tight to the wall, thus reducing the actual width even further. Larger vehicles, including emergency vehicles, will not likely be able to negotiate the driveway as proposed when vehicles are parked in those spaces. Per code, a parallel parking space requires a minimum eighteen-foot maneuvering aisle on a two-way aisle. As parking is now proposed along this driveway, it should be considered a maneuvering aisle and have the required aisle width. The applicant is also proposing to reduce the maneuvering aisle in the parking area from the required twenty-four feet to fifteen point seven feet. This width will not provide sufficient turning movement for vehicles to park upon entering and leaving the parking area for at least four of the proposed six spaces in the parking area. The previously approved compliant parking space, parking layout is preferred. Regards, Robert Oliver, City Engineer, City of Gardner, Fifty Mankin Drive, Gardner, Mass. Zero One Four Four Zero. Okay. Mr. Bambachi, do you, do you wanna address, um, Mr., Mr. Oliver, the city engineer's concerns that he had with regard to the width of the driveway and the proposed parking spaces along the driveway?
I mean, I will agree that it's not ideal, that wasn't part of our original scope. The way we were trying to test it is by, by, by using the trucks to go up and down the driveway and confirm that we can make it happen. There is, I mean, you know, during snow emergencies, all, all parking spaces will certainly be used. I do think that there is, you know, a lot of street parking during the other nine months of the year. But it definitely is, you know, short of the requirements if we, if we're able to put the, the parking there. Um, in terms of the back, um, maneuverability, I mean, I think by, by dedicated, I mean, I think, I think, um, three of the parking spaces are probably restricted in terms of that twenty-four-foot variance, but by giving two of the spaces to the same unit, I think that they could trade, you know, spaces and coordinate who's going in and out. We also did perform the test of turning from unit six out without crossing over the lines with a, with a full-size pickup. And so I do think that there is enough room to get out if people are careful. Um, but the idea is by, you know, giving it to the same unit, that they should be able to coordinate appropriately.
Okay. Any questions from the board at this point?
You still need to ask.
I will, yeah.
I guess, uh, one of the questions I have is that, uh, has it been considered that those two parking spaces alongside the driveway be restricted to the only, to only be used during snow emergencies where they can't park in the street?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great idea. I mean, we would, we would certainly be open to something like that and, and juggling the assigned spots so that it would just be a couple overflow spaces.
The, um, relocation of the trash receptacles from the rear of the building to the front of the building. What is, what is your proposal to screen those from view?
We'll put up a, um, we'll put up a, not a chain leak fence, we'll put up a, a barrier fence that you're not able to see from the street. Um, normally, they're, they will do like a self-standing step, fence that's anchored into the concrete.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause from my perspective, I don't think that's ideal, um, but I understand you're restricted on where it could go.
The other thing we were kinda struggling with is, um, totes in the back, no one will, no one will pull them up to the front. And so by having, making it easy, it tends to be, um, the best way when dealing with the longevity of the building.
I, I, I'm gonna ask this question, and I know, um, all of the units are two-bedroom units. Have you considered setting condition on rental of some of the units to only one car per unit?
I mean, honestly, a lot of the people that wanna move in this building only have one vehicle. And I think that was one of the discussions that we had originally is, um, you know, there, there's a big demand for first-floor living with limited stairs. This building's unique where, you know, it's built on grade, we have four of the eight units with no or, or very limited amount of stairs. And so the idea is, like, we actually have people in our existing portfolio in town that would move into these buildings that are, um, you know, mode, um.
Mobility challenged.
Mobility restricted or challenged, um, and, and they, and they either only have one car, or in many cases, they have no cars. Um, but we understand the ordinance, and so that's why we're trying to get as much parking as we can.
Anything else, so, open it up?
I'm good.
Okay, are the, um, are there any abutters to the property who'd like to speak with regard to this application? Gentlemen in the back, your name and your address, please.
My name is Aaron Holm, and I'm, I reside at Two Thirty-Eight West Street, Gardner, Mass. So my concern is, I own the house next door, the bacon house. Um, there's an alleyway between my house and the apartment house that's tarred, it's very steep. And I'm concerned that if there's no parking for people to park, they're gonna wanna park between my house and that house, uh, which really, you could fit a car in there, but it's not, it's so steep that it's, it's dangerous to be down in between there with a vehicle. My concern is that people are gonna wanna park in there, and so that grade is very rough, and it's not smooth. It's gonna be a liability for the owner because of the terrain, that it's, the tar is uneven. People walking down through there, if they do walk down there, my concern is that there's gonna be accidents, people sliding into other vehicles. As soon as it snows and gets icy, there's a, you've got a guardrail at the bottom down there that people are gonna end up sliding into. And that's, that's the layout that it is, but there's some concerns there with accidents happening, but that's. My concern is between me and that apartment house, that.
Now, in, I, they were originally proposed parking spaces between your, your unit and, your, your house and the subject house. I remember that, being there, and I, I remember we, I think we had some conditions on, you know, enclosing the deck or, or something like that at that point. Anything else?
Yeah, no, that's, my concern is I would object to having anybody park in between my house and that.
But if you're parking on his property, how can you object to that?
Well, it's not safe.
I understand, okay. Mr. Bambachi, do you want to address, uh, Mr. Holmes' concern that, um, it's safe? Are, are you gonna repave this whole area?
Yeah, so it's all, um, the main, the main parking lot's been repaved. We, we do plan to repave the other side of the parking lot. We're just waiting for the decision on what we're doing in back to decide if we're doing it all at once, or if we're gonna do it piecemeal.
Okay.
Um, but there were, there were two parking spots already proposed there, there were vehicles already parked there on a routine basis. I don't know.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Holmes. Are there, any other abutters to the property who'd like to speak with regard to this application, either for or against this application? Any abutters to the property who'd like to speak either in favor or against this application? Are there any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of or against this application? Are any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of or against this application? Any interested parties who'd like to speak with regard to this application? Okay, um.
I'd like to go visit it.
Yeah, I think.
Same here.
Yeah, since I, I, I remember when we visited the, I think it was, it was winter. I think when we went the last time, I think it was slippery. It was slippery, um, trying to, I, I figured the parking was gonna be a challenge.
Could he mark where this?
Yeah, Mr. Bambachi, can we, can you mark out, um, the revised parking spaces, um, somewhat like you did the last time?
Yeah, yeah, we can, um, map them out, and we can't stake them now, but we can.
No, you can't stake them, obviously, but if you, you know, white dots on the ground or something, so, or orange dots in case it snows, and I'm gonna see the white dots. Okay, um, hopefully, we won't get any snow. Do we wanna set a date now, or do we want to?
Yeah, sure. What, what would be available for, for you?
I'll, I'll make whatever work on your schedule.
All right.
Preferably for me, 'cause I work out of town, be a Saturday would be best.
Saturday?
What about this Saturday?
How about this Saturday?
Twenty-first?
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-first.
Yeah, we can make that work.
What time works for you, gentlemen?
Nine, ten.
Yeah, same thing.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Okay.
Nine o'clock this Saturday, we'll take a, we'll take a look at it. Let me just check the forecast. Snow on Friday.
Yeah.
Well, we'll get to see where they put the snow.
Live demonstration.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, um, I, I think I'll entertain a motion to keep this public hearing open, just in case questions come up during the site visit.
Second.
Okay, all right, so we'll continue this, uh, hearing to the next meeting, which is March. We don't have a meeting in February.
Okay.
And, uh, when was your original date? Um, we might have to seek an extension of that date, because we're unable to have a, a quorum in our February meeting 'cause of people being away. If, if we need an extension, you're amenable to, to an extension?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll leave it at that, and we'll watch the date, and if, uh, the secretary will be in touch with you if we need to, um, seek, get an extension.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, see you Saturday.
Nine AM.
This Saturday, nine AM.
And I'll turn it back over to Mr. LaFond, his chair.
File.
Thank you.
Okay. I will assume the chairmanship right now. Next case before the board is one zero zero one two oh two two. It's a continuance, a variance of Zero Clark Street, order of reman, an access roadway over a portion of land zone, single-family residential one, which provides access to the portion zone, rural residential two. Now, we've had several meetings on this, and I think we're coming, uh, pretty close to the end point. Uh, if you remember the last meeting and our last site visit, we asked Attorney Campabasso to clarify the property lines, the right-of-way lines, and then also confer with the city solicitor for either validation or dispute. I do have a document, uh, from the city solicitor, which I'll read after. And I'm gonna allow Attorney Campabasso to update every interested party here, and what he has found during your research, et cetera, sir. So, attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Peter Campabasso. An attorney representing the applicant, Harbor Classic Homes, with offices at Three Park Street in Lomond, Mass. The last meeting, I believe, um, we talked about the, um, issue raised regarding a potential right-of-way on the abutter's property. Based on the information and the copies of the deeds that I submitted, what I explained was that the the land that's owned by the applicant that we're seeking a variance over, um, there is no right-of-way that is located within those boundaries. And the right-of-way that the abutter is raising is actually a right of access that runs over her property, uh, for the benefit of the land in the back. I did send all of the paperwork to Attorney Flick. Um, I had a brief discussion with him, but based on his review of what I submitted to the board, my explanation, he agreed that there is no right-of-way, um, issue that exists on the land that the applicant is seeking the variance over. What we've also done is try to establish by the plans that we submitted, you know, the exact location of the zoning lines, the boundary lines, the abutting boundary lines. And the area that is highlighted here in gray is the area that, um, we're seeking the variance for. The land in question, this is the approximately eighty-four acres of land that Harbor Classic Homes owns. And their intent is to put some type of a residential subdivision in the land up back. And what you can see is, the shape of the lot is a very odd-shaped lot in the sense that it only has about a hundred and fifty feet of frontage here on Clark Street. That's sort of like a hammerhead, and it has a similar small entrance way, um, over here on Century Way to get to the land in the back. The issue that they are confronted with is the zoning lines on the property are such that the R-two district that the proposed open space residential development, um, would be on is behind, uh, SR, uh, Single Family Residence One Zone and the R-three zone. So that is why the request for the variance is being made. And I think in viewing this, some of the other concerns that were raised pertain to the roadway entrance, the width of the road. Um, as was explained, um, in the subdivision process, uh, the applicant will have to present a subdivision plan that complies with the subdivision rules and regulations of the City of Gardner. The area in question, um, the request for the variance is back here because initially two applications for variance were submitted, um, one for the Century Way entrance and one for the Clark Street entrance. The Century Way entrance was approved, the Clark Street was denied, and based on the appeal in some preliminary matters before the land court, um, the parties agreed to reman the case back to the zoning board to reconsider the decision. We believe that the requirements for the variance can easily be met. As I showed with the other map, the vast majority of this land is in the R-two zone. Probably in excess of ninety-five percent of the land is in the R-two zone. But because of the very small, um, odd-shaped entrance ways, uh, they, they only access to the property is over the small areas that are in different zones. That creates a hardship for the applicant because they would not be able to propose an open space residential development. I think what's important for the board to remember, the request that's before the board tonight is just for a use variance for the roadway. But for the use variance, the applicant will not be able to proceed for a special permit. And that's the hard, that's an additional hardship that's created. So, we, we do believe that based on the prior statements, the information that's been provided, the variance can be granted. What's also important, I think the primary concern that's been expressed at every meeting we've been to is the traffic concerns, the traffic safety concerns, the traffic issues. When we initially had a technical review or discussion with the planning board to speak about the proposed subdivision application and the proposed open space special permit application, this issue was raised regarding the entrance way and possible zoning issues based on the zoning lines. Before we got into engineering plans, hot engineering, things of that nature, they wanted us to resolve this issue. That's why we came before the board. Subdivision process will require the applicant to have preliminary meetings with the planning board, but what the board has to remember is any application that is submitted to the planning board for a subdivision or for the open space special permit requires the applicant to specifically deal with impacts on the neighborhood, the surrounding area. Traffic's a big concern. Traffic study will more than likely be done and submitted so that any design will take into consideration the traffic concerns and the traffic issues that would be raised. There is no formal traffic study at this point, and general concerns, we understand that no matter what proposal or development goes in there, there will be impacts that will need to be addressed when we go before the planning board. An approval of this, um, will not derogate from the zoning bylaw because the primary use that'll be in the back will be single-family residential homes, which is consistent with the SR one district and the R-three district. So the use that will be proposed is not some special type of use that would be in direct conflict with the surrounding district. I did, um, submit plans that did show the boundaries of the abutted property and the Harbor Classic Homes, which I believe everyone has. I did submit a plan that showed where the actual roadway were staked in the painted lines, and then we had the plan that, um, showed where the Chickwin land was, the Harbor Classic Homes land was, and that little strip that's owned by Harbor Classic Homes that abuts the Chickwin property. And I think at the last meeting, there was some request that I bring some additional copies, so I have them. I don't know if you want me to place them here or give them to the.
Thank you, Claire.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Attorney Campabasso. I know when we were at the site visit, uh, we asked the representative of the company, Mr. Flick, to update some, a drawing to more solidify the property lines, et cetera, because when we visited, uh, it was pretty apparent where the lines were, but they were orange spray paint on leaves and they have a tendency to move when the wind blows. So, you know, you could project where it was, but he was going to update something and just chat about it at this meeting.
Sure. And I think Mr. Campabasso did give you that, that plan.
Are those the documents we just referred to?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm giving you these. I got one more to, to give you.
For the record, Wesley Flick, Haley Ward. Uh, we are the civil engineers on the project, and so I did prepare a plan. I don't know, I have a larger size too. But I know that was sent, uh, via email, the package that was sent to Attorney Flick. There was an attachment to that email that was sent to Attorney Flick. We did, uh, show the areas that we did state for the roadway, um, and the different property lines out there with regards to the property lines with the abutting property and the, uh, the proposed right-of-way that would happen, uh, if the subdivision were to go through at some point down the road. And we did show the areas that were painted on the prop, on the property also in that plan.
Okay. Thank you, Wesley Flick. Okay, and I do have the document. There was reference between, uh, Attorney Campabasso, city solicitor John Flick, and the zoning board. And I'm going to read it then to the, because it came through. And this says, this was dated January tenth from Peter Campabasso at eleven fifty-one AM to John Flick, Flick Law Group. Carbon copies, uh, to myself, Mariella, Wes Flick, Jamie Rowe, and Jamie Rowe is with Haley Ward, the engineering firm. And regards Harbor Classic Homes. Hi, John. I wanted to follow up with you to address the right-of-way issued by Mr. Chickwin during the public hearings. At the last meeting, I provided documents to board members that establish Mr. Chickwin does not have the right-of-way access interest in or over the land owned by Harbor Classic Homes here and after, referred to as HCH. The proposed roadway is on land owned exclusively by HCH and does not impact the Chickwin land or the right-of-way raised by Mr. Chickwin. Attached on the deeds recorded at the registry of deeds provided to the board, which are relevant to the title of Chickwin's land and HCH's land. Also sketches, uh, also attached are sketches drawn by Haley Ward, which show common boundaries to the parcels and the proposed roadway. Chickwin and HCH titles derived from the same source deed, a deed dated February fourteenth, nineteen fifty, from Hector H. Reed to Paul M. Reed, and re, and recorded in book three three oh seven, page five four two, see attached. Track one and track two of the deed originally consisted of approximately ninety-three point twenty-five acres of land off Clark Street. In nineteen fifty-four, Paul M. Reed conveyed to Louis F. Chickwin, Jr. by a deed dated December twenty-ninth, nineteen fifty-four, and recorded at book three six five two, page three seventy, a one-acre parcel off Clark Street, being a portion of the land acquired by him by deed of three three oh seven, page three five four two, see attached. In that deed, Paul M. Reed reserved the right-of-way over the cart road, passing through the northwesterly end of the granted premises to Louis F. Chickwin, Jr. to the remaining land of Paul M. Reed, acquired by deed three three oh seven, page five four two. Excuse me. The cart road ran off Clark Street. In nineteen sixty-eight, Louis F. Chickwin, Jr. conveyed to himself and Irene M. Chickwin, the same one-acre parcel, by a deed dated March eighteenth, nineteen sixty-eight, and recorded in book four eight three seven, page two two eight, see attached. That deed is the current deed for Mrs. Chickwin that you referenced below and was conveyed subject to the right-of-way as reserved in the deed of Paul M. Reed to Louis F. Chickwin, Jr. The right-of-way is the gray area access easement over Chickwin's parcels shown on the Haley Ward sketch. The sketch shows the approximate location of the right-of-way reserved by Reed in book three six five two, page three seven zero, for the benefit of his other land off Clark Street. The red solid line is common, is the common boundary line for Chickwin's land and HCH's land. HCH is the owner of the remaining Reed land in book three three oh seven, page five four two, and acquired title by deed dated January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and recorded at book six six nine eight seven, page one two five, see attached. The red boundary line is also shown on the proposed road sketch to establish that the roadway does not encroach or cross over Chickwin's land or the right-of-way. The proposed roadway interest off Clark Street is located over land owned by HCH. It is the third described parcel in deed six six nine eight seven, page one two five, referenced above. The chain of title to said parcels leads back to its start deed dated September fourteenth, nineteen sixty-three, and sixty-three, and recorded at book four four oh five, page four E three, from Paul M. Reed to Alfred Chickwin, see attached. This chain of title also derives out of the original deed at book three three oh seven, page five four two. The original parcel conveyed by the four four oh five slash four E three deed consisted of a two-point four acre parcel off, of land off Clark Street, which is, which was triangular in shape. Lot one on plan book five six four, page forty, which you referenced below, is the remaining. That's all I have on here. Do you have a copy of this with you? I've got it now, Mr. Campabasso, I have it. Is the remaining portion of the two-point four acre parcel described in book four four oh five, page four eight three. The proposed roadway leads off Clark Street over lot one on plan book five six four, page forty, and continues over the other land of HCH, being parcel one of book six six nine eight seven, page one two five. The pro, proposed roadway was staked and marked for the board. A sketch of the proposed roadway with stake and paintings is attached. The proposed roadway does not cross over or encroach on Mr., Mrs. Chickwin's land or cross over or encroach on a right-of-way. I research, I searched the grantee index at the Worcester Registry of Deeds starting in nineteen fifty-four to see if a right-of-way of convenience or conveyance was separately recorded and conveyed to Louis F. Chickwin, Jr. and Irene M. Chickwin. The search does not show a separate recorded or deeded right-of-way. The attached documents established, established that the right-of-way of Mr. Chickwin is referencing regarding his mother's land is the right-of-way Paul M. Reed retained over her land in nineteen fifty-four for the benefit of his remaining land, which is now owned by HCH. Therefore, my conclusion is there will be no adverse impact regarding a right-of-way on which Miss, on, on a right-of-way which benefits Mr. Chickwin. The title to HCH's entire parcel of land off Clark Street is extensive and was very time-consuming. My abstract consists of three hundred and seventy pages of documents. I understand the board would like you to confirm the contents of this email and that you are in agreement, so there is no impact to any right-of-way as raised by Mr. Chickwin. I will contact you to discuss this further, to answer any additional questions you may have. The next public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, at six thirty PM. I respectfully ask that you respond to the zoning board confirming my conclusions, so they will be in a position to take action on the variance request. Thank you. Submitted Peter A. Campabasso, Esquire Law Office of Peter A. Campabasso, Three Park Street, third floor, Leominster, Mass. Oh one four four oh. Okay, this is a response from J. Flick, Flick Law Group, addressed to me, LCC, Peter Campabasso, and M. Negron, Garden Mass Gov. Subject, Harbor Classic Homes. It's dated January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten fifty-one AM. It had attachments of Clark Street deeds, right-of-way, Harbor Classics Home, Conquer Crossing, ZBA Sketch Plan, Harbor Classic Homes, Conquer Crossing, ZBA Sketch Plan, that's the stat, uh, street parking, street staking, I'm sorry, and the others, a lot layout in a PDF. Chairman LaFond, I have reviewed the following title analysis and the attached engineering sketches regarding the axes, access easement over the Chickwin land. I concur with the opinion of counsel and the location of the property lines as depicted on the attached plans. This opinion is based on a review of the attached documents. I would also make note that the base, that based on the title history, Harbor Classic Homes is the beneficiary of the easement, while the Chickwin property bears the burden. As the beneficiary of the easement, Harbor Classic Homes could release the easement, thus terminating any burden on the Chickwin land. Please let me know if any additional information is needed. Best, John Flick, City Solicitor. So that's a response to your submitted documents. So I'm going to open it up, just ask if there's any questions, because we've been over this a couple of times. I ask that any questions or comments be addressed to the new information, et cetera. We're not going to go back and start it. The first line. So, I'll start with Mr. Jean, uh, as representative of the city. Do you have any further comments, et cetera, regarding this?
No, I, I, in listening to the, uh, the letters you read, I, I would have to agree with Attorney Flick.
Okay, thank you. Are there any abutters who would like to provide a comment in favor of? Any abutters to the property who would like to provide a comment in favor of? Any abutters to the property who would like to object to the comment to provide a comment against the application? Any abutters to the property who wants to speak in opposition? Mr. Dur.
I just want to re, General Porgia, three twenty-three Clark Street. I just want to restate my opposition. For the last couple of meetings, restated again. Thank you.
Thank you. You have the right to do that. Any interested parties who would like to comment either for or against? Yeah?
Robin Ledger, sixty-nine Clark Street. I also want to do my general opposition to this development. I understand it's not a zoning issue right now.
Well, I think I want to go back. You used the term development. All we're looking at here is that piece of land, not the proposed.
Rena, I, I know that.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's clear so people understand.
It is, it's a zoning issue right now. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Okay. Board members. David or Mel, do you have any questions, comments?
Nope. I think we've asked them all.
I think we've asked them all, they've been answered.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Camp, Attorney Campabasso, do you have any, how called, closing comments?
Just a, a couple of closing comments, if I could. I think what, um, Wes Flick has informed the board and what we've tried to stress is the, the lines we're showing in the paintings and stakes, it's all approximation. The, the hot engineering, the exact surveying with the layout has not been completed. My request, even though if you, if you look at the plans that we've submitted, when you extend the zoning lines, it appears that the relief we're requesting here is, is really only in, in R-three district. I would still request from the board that if, um, a variance is granted. I would still request from the Board that if a variance is granted, that the variance be granted over the SR, the SFR1 zone and the R3 zone, in the event this line is this way five feet or closer five feet, and the extension doesn't actually get into the, only into the R3. It's a technicality, but I would want to make sure that we, we cover the variance request. And, and most importantly, I think what the Board has to keep in mind and consider, approving the variance does not approve a residential subdivision, and it does not approve an open space special permit. It simply gives the applicant, Harbor Classic Homes, the opportunity to present a subdivision plan, as well as an open space residential development plan and special permit application. And that's, that's all their, their seeking is for that opportunity.
Could we focus just a little bit more on, because this is a use variance?
Correct.
Uh, and as you know, that we're only talking about this parcel, so it really doesn't matter, as you pointed out several times, the fact that there are, there's a development next to it. The fact is, the use has got to be based on the shape, soil conditions, and topography, and so on of that piece of land. Could you spend a couple of more minutes just focusing on that aspect?
Sure, because this, this piece of property is a very wide-shaped lot. It probably would not conform to zoning, to, to put a residential, single-family residential home on there without some type of a variance. And the use comes into play because all three districts have essentially the same types of residential uses, except R2 does allow for the open space residential subdivision. The SFR1 and the R3 do not. And the open space residential development is not an open space, is not a use by right. It's only a use that can be allowed by special permit.
I understand, but that really doesn't focus, again, back on just the piece of land. That's what I'm after, is, I understand the implication of the development and the open, open space versus what they have by right. But the, the real issue in my mind is, if we're to grant a use variance, it has to be on certain criteria, as you're well aware of, and that, and I'm just trying to get you to focus on that, that piece.
Well, the, the use variance would be for single-family residential homes, which is a use that's consistent with the other districts. So that, that would be the primary use. The fact that we would need to use this, to use it, if we get a special permit for open space over here, this roadway technically is being used for a use that's not allowed here.
I know.
So that's why we need the use variance. In, in the way the land is shaped, in the way the entrance is situated, there's no other way for the applicant to get to that backland.
Okay. Yeah, okay. David?
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to move forward on a decision on this case? I don't think there's much left that we can squeeze out. You know, I think everything has been addressed as best as, best could be.
Yep. Make a motion to move.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No. I don't.
No, the only discussion I would have, if the Board does vote in favor, your condition is stated regarding the rural two and the single family, so it will not put, let's say, put a barrier up the way back here again in six months, addressing almost the same issue.
Correct.
So I'll get the wording from you after, if the Board does vote in favor. Okay, so I'll call for the vote. All those, all those in favor of granting this variance request for Harbor Classic Homes, with the condition that we just mentioned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have unanimous vote approval. As you're aware, Attorney Campabasso, we have 14 days to write the decision, and once it comes in as timestamped, then there's a 20-day waiting period as it goes before, or it's out. If anybody wants to appeal, then they have to appeal to this, within this, file the appeal through City Clerk's office in those 20 days. And I'll make mention to this, when it's timestamped, if it's timestamped at 1:05 p.m., it just, it doesn't go by the day. The 20th day goes to 1:04, 1:04:59 p.m. So we've had some people who have appealed, and they didn't come in on time, and they missed it by a couple hours. So I just want to make sure that's clear, that everybody understands that. Okay.
All right. This all goes in that file for it, Ray.
So I'm just, the Board's gonna take a five-minute recess, so we can get this package back together.
I would like to thank the Board for all of its efforts and time spent with the applicant reviewing this. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next case before the Board is case 11012022, special permit. 63 Walnut Street, convert an office building to seven residential units. I'll read the application, your application to operate a multifamily at 63 Walnut Street, Garden Mass., parcel ID R27-22-20, located in a general residential three zoning district, GR3, is denied, as it does not comply with Chapter 675, Attachment 1, colon, 1, excuse me, Table of Uses Number 5, multifamily dwelling of the City Code of Garden. The zoning code states that your requested use requires special permit in the GR3 zoning district. Agent or attorney for 63 Walnut Street?
I'm not your attorney, I'm one of them.
Name and address, and you can begin.
I'm Daniel Stroh.
And I'll just update the last meeting, the original meeting that we had. You did submit this application. It did need, it's, it did need updating in terms of dimensions and a more strong, a stronger narrative of what you were going to do, with pictures or drawings depicting. So the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, too.
Um, just a little summary, I'm sure you know, but not to the public. We are proposing to convert this one-story office building, commercial building, I should say, that was last used as an office building, to seven residential units. We are, we have, last time, used a site plan, which was inherited by us from the previous owner, and the Board requested an updated plan, which I'm going to show here. And I did write a few notes that, points that the Board raised last time. I'm just going to quickly go over that. Um, the building is depicted here, Walnut Street, which is technically the south of the property, north is the back of the building, existing driveway, existing parking lot. We did make a change in the previous, the previous plan, again, that we inherited, and I actually made a copy so you can see better.
That's good.
This was, again, this was the previous, previous plan.
Mm-hmm.
And what's existing right now, does not really confirm with the city standards.
Thank you.
That, oh, this is the new one. I'm sorry.
It's a new one.
I only have two.
That's okay.
Anyway.
Was it, it was part of your original application?
Part of the original application, but with a, with a more readable drawing. That's what we are presenting right now. So that parking lot with the 90-degree parking does not really work, because the aisle would, would be 16 feet, which is less than the standard. So we are proposing now a, yes, this is the old one, and again, this is existing, but is not confirmed. We are proposing now parallel parking, which would give us an aisle of over 18 feet, which is, again, would be according, confirm to the, to the standard. Other than that, a few points that the Board requested. The lot area is 16,000, 1600, 695 square foot. The area, the front lawn is about 25, 10 square feet, which is 15% of the lot area. We have green space in the back, and we have other previous surface on the property, but without, even without those, we meet the 15% requirement for green space. The location of the dumpster is shown here. It's right in the end of the driveway. The, the driveway is 24 feet coming in. The dumpster is right at the end of the driveway. We have a snow removal area here, which we think is adequate for the property, but we are ready to track the snow if we need to. Again, the plan does provide the dimensions. And the lighting, I do have, again, an update on the lighting. The quality of the print is not great, but again, you should see the circles showing where the lighting is.
Got it.
There are four on the, on the north side, and three on the west side. And again, I have three of these.
How many bedrooms do you have in the area?
There are seven bedrooms. All units are one-bedroom units, so there'd be seven bedrooms. We did present the layouts. Again, these layouts are conceptual layouts. Of course, before we go to apply for a building permit, we are going to take another pass of this, make sure it confirms with the current code, but I just, we just want, they are very close to what we are actually ready to build, so we wanted to present those, so the Board can see. And then, our understanding is that the next step would be a visit to, inspection to the property, and since you are meeting at 9 o'clock on Saturday, we're thinking that maybe you can come and see us next.
I think so, if everybody's available. Once we, we just check our calendars here shortly. Your property that borders Walnut Street?
Yes.
What's the set, that setback depth from Walnut Street?
24 feet. It's actually 24 feet on the left-hand side, it's about 25 on the right-hand side here.
It's 25.
I understand the dimensions are a little bit too small on that. We can send you a PDF, which would be better.
Okay, now if I read part of this correctly, your parking spaces are 35 feet in length?
Our parking is, are 22 in length and eight.
Eight in width.
Again.
Eight and 22?
Eight and 22, yes.
22.
I have the table here from the, we used.
Okay.
Yes.
And?
We used the.
You use the, what's in the state in the code.
Yeah.
Okay. And so it's, now the spaces are supposed to, you've exceeded in the length, but you're a little narrow on the, the width. It's supposed to be nine by 18. If you want to do nine by 22, almost.
For, for parallel parking on a two-way, the standard shows eight by 22.
Yep. You're right. Okay, great. So there's plenty of room for them to maneuver.
Yes.
When they park.
Now, what is this second phase development?
This is a storage, it has been used as a storage, and we don't have plans for it right now, so we'll just leave it undeveloped. We'll have to.
Will it be tenant storage?
No. This is going to be not used for, for second phase. And it's going to be made safe, whatever that, that means, meaning sprinkler system and whatever the code requires.
Any other questions right now, Mel or Dave?
Do you, did you provide the side setbacks on the building?
Uh, yes, they are.
21.
Thirty, so 24 in the front, basically 24 the side, the minimum.
So that's, the parking lot goes right to your property line?
Correct. And there is a, the property line enlarges in the back, so there's an extra 15 feet in the back.
Yeah.
But the driveway, as you come in, is actually the property line. And then there's 30, 35, 35 feet in the back.
What about the right-hand side?
The right-hand side, there is nine foot from the, from the building to the property line.
How much?
Nine feet.
Nine feet?
Yes.
No.
Randy, anything right now?
No, but remember, you just have to address the.
Yep, that's what I meant, that's one. You did submit originally written responses to the criteria for special permit. The Board would like you to go through that again.
Okay.
Please.
So number one, the proposal shall be suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed, and/or the entire city, and shall be compatible with neighborhood character, existing uses, and other uses permitted by right in the same district. We did provide in original application, a map of the area showing other multi-units in the area. We understand that the, the neighborhood is predominantly one and two families, but there are a lot of larger multifamily units in there, and a lot of commercial space as Number two, the proposal should provide convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site, and in relation to adjacent streets, property and improvement. We do have off-street parking that we just went over. We are not proposing to change anything from the, you know, the layout of the footprint of the building, or the general layout of the parking, parking lot. We believe it provides adequate space for off-street parking, loading, and unloading. We do understand, and this was one of the comments the Board had on a previous application, that, you know, once you park near the building, you wouldn't be able to open the, the door on the right-hand side. We expect passengers to get off the vehicle before they actually park in the final position, and we understand that's a limitation, but we have to work with, with the existing plans. The proposed, the proposal should provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for the proper operation, proposed use and disposal of sewer, sewage, refuse and other waste products, and methods of drainage of surfaced water. We did talk last time about the drainage. We did talk last time about the drainage, and we'll look at that on-site when the board is there. We believe that we meet that.
So in the back parking area now, there's no, no, you know, organized drainage or anything?
No.
How, in general, it goes, I guess, to its just our street side?
There is a lower portion right here between the two properties that has some crushed stone. Again, this was an easement, so technically it could be an access. But there is a city drainage right here between the two properties. Actually, it's on, possibly on the public site, but it's right here. So all the water is actually draining towards that.
So what's, what's the purpose of the easement, do you know?
There is a lot in the back that's wooden that I believe.
It's undeveloped, it's currently undeveloped?
It's currently undeveloped. And I, because of the grade, I don't think anybody will be able to develop that. But I think historically, they had the easement there.
Okay.
Now, is that building a flat roof?
Yes. It's not a flat roof. It's actually sloping to the back. There is a gutter along the back wall, and there is a dump spot here that directs the water, as I said, towards this lower portion.
For water flow off of the roof, is what's there now adequate to direct it away from those parking spaces in the back? So they just wouldn't turn to a blanket of ice?
Yes, because again, it's a gentle slope, but the proper does slope towards the west, so towards there. Shall I move to number five?
Sure, please.
The prop, the proposal should not constitute a nuisance due to air or, and water pollution, erosion, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibration, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features. Again, the use is residential. As far as the aspect, we, the original building was brick. There was some kind of siding before on the back of the building. We propose to go back to the brick. We think that that's a much better look.
So the siding on the back, you're going to remove it to bring, to expose?
It's already removed. You can, you also, you see some of the wood that was supporting the siding, and I don't understand why they put siding instead of repairing the brick, but that's what they chose to do. So we're going to go back to the brick. There is a little bit of cinder block on this end. Again, it's going to look masonry. We're going to repair the masonry brick and cinder block and make it look really nice. Six, the proposal should not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to butters, vehicles, or pedestrians as determined by the SPGA. This is something that comes, I think, later as well, but this, you know, is historically a commercial property. Previous proposed use was as a transitional home, a group home. We believe that the current proposal is much more beneficial for the neighborhood in terms of traffic because it's reduced traffic compared to a commercial use. Number seven, the proposal should be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter, and we believe that it is. Number eight, the proposal should not have a significant detrimental impact on city services, tax base, and employment opportunities. It will, the proposal will certainly create jobs. We do not have an estimate on the number of part-time jobs that we'll create, but we are obviously going to use local tradespeople for the, for the work. And the tax bases will obviously be increased. We understand that. The proposal is consistent with a city's community development plan or master plan. This is particularly relevant because there is a paragraph H two-six of the community development plan that says that facilitated, mandates the redevelopment, to facilitate the redevelopment of vacant lots and abandoned buildings in the, in and near the downtown, which is what we are proposing here. Number ten does not apply because it's.
Right. Okay, I just have sort of two questions. Your lighting?
Yes.
Be focused down and not big spotlights that will actually impact the butters or be downward?
Yes. The parking in the back, if you look exactly at the, of the shapes, the parking in the back is going to be a slight angle, but in the back, there is a bottom of the hill, so there is no property. But on the side, yes, it's going to be downwards.
Okay, thank you.
And we do, we do have the, presented the, the lighting, the specs of the lighting that we propose.
My other sort of comment, with all these parking spaces, are you planning on lining out the parking spaces? Just putting lines so people know exactly where they're supposed to park?
Absolutely. We do that on all our properties, and that's something that helps people. Otherwise, it's still, it's still relatively tight.
They'll park anywhere?
Yes.
Now, on your lighting?
Hold, hold, just, just to clarify that, the parking is assigned. So you, if you are unit one, you are assigned.
Unit one, parking space one.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, your lighting in the rear, is that adequate to provide enough light for the people's parking towards the back of their?
Yes, again, we have, we want to take, you can actually see, but it's not very clear, but it does go to the back.
The red circles indicate the illuminated area?
And we use, we, we use them.
I see it here.
Oh, that right.
There's the red circles here.
So like, this is the light fixture?
Yeah. But how far? Will it penetrate all the way to the rear is what I'm asking?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
We use the manufacturer specs to draw those lines.
Okay. You have any questions, Randy, at this point?
You mentioned other properties. Is, is there going to be a manager, local, or how, if tenants have an issue with an apartment, who, how far is your maintenance staff?
We have, one of our partners is, lives close by. We do always partner with local maintenance people for. Our majority of our projects are in the Worcester area, but we do have projects like this one that are farther away. We've never had an issue. We, all the office work is done centrally, and we have our plumbers and electricians and maintenance people who can travel if needed, but we always have a local person.
Yeah, yeah, I just, and you, what you were just saying is that they're close by. I'd like to be a little more definitive what close by is, especially if there's a heavy snowstorm or something, you know, close by if it's an hour. That's not false by. Your name and address, please.
Glen Sharn, Seventeen Harborsden Road. I'm in Barry, I'll be involved.
All right, so you're going to.
As needed, all the time.
You'll be handling like, snow removal and?
Maybe not personally, but I will make sure it's, it's happening.
So either you or one of.
I'll be pulsing that.
You or one of your employees or something will be taking care of that?
Right.
Okay, thank you. And repairs, and you mentioned plumbers, you know, if a toilet plugs or something happens, and where would the electrician or plumber be coming from?
Actually, we have a project right now in Templeton, and we have, we always work with local people because, as you said, for an electrician to come to from Worcester, it's not feasible. But if there is a bigger problem, we do have people on staff who can come and solve the problem.
Trash dumpster, is it going to be screened? How, what's your proposal?
We're not proposing that. We do have, usually we put wood fence around it. It doesn't show like that.
So your intention is to fence it in with, screen it with fencing, okay.
Yeah, so you're really visually blocking it from somebody looking like a chain-link fence, you can still look at it?
Yes.
But something either with polyvinyl or wood or something, just?
We, we prefer wood usually because it's more organic, if you want, but we'll be open to anything that the board thinks.
Yeah, I don't think the board is going to really suggest you have to do poly or you have to do wood. We just want it so it's visually not seen from the street, that it's a trash bin, et cetera. It's just, you know, it just looks like part of a small building.
Yes.
The, this isn't part of the special permit, but it's more of my curiosity than nothing else. I see just a small utility room. Are these units individually heated, and is it going to be cooling as well, or how?
Yes, the, the building will be.
Air-conditioned and?
Air-conditioned, yes.
Air-conditioned?
We, we specialize in not just this project, but all our projects are high-end but affordable. We are not, you know, at the price level of Avalon, even if we have the same amenities. Not the case here, but I'm just telling you what, what we are doing. We're going to have granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, that type of finishes.
Okay, that was going to be my next question. What price, you know, what price range are you looking for, for rentals? It's really not, you know, questionable for the, more curiosity than anything. Are they market rate pretty much, or?
They're market rate, absolutely.
Market rate versus subsidized or low income or something like that?
No, we, we only do market rates. We don't even have.
So there'd be no twenty-five percent as low-income families, and this would be all straight market? Okay. Randy, anything else at this point? No?
Nope.
Not at this point, no.
Yeah, let me see. If we can look at doing this on, possibly on Saturday, following the other ones, so let me just turn around and check my calendar.
While you're doing that, we, do we want to open it up for comments from the?
Yeah. Any representatives to speak regarding this application?
The only thing I'd like to comment on is the existing retaining wall on the property. The, the parking plan that they inherited included digging the bank back because they needed more room and installing a new retaining wall. Retaining wall, existing retaining wall is in pretty sad shape. I think maybe a condition, where the bearings to be granted, the special permit to be granted, be that the retaining wall be upgraded?
Okay, well, I think we can, when we view it, we can see that.
Saturday, you'll be able to see what I'm talking about.
And Saturday, I'm not available all day.
Okay.
Whenever you go, you'll be able to fake, you'll be able to see it.
Thank you. You recovered quickly. Let's see, you're retired, you're not.
Every day is Saturday.
We would prefer during the week. I was just, I was just suggesting Saturday just because you already had a meet, a side visit on Saturday, so we're just thinking maybe we do back-to-back.
Well, we could, but I'm out of town on Saturday, so. You want to, well, it gets dark now in the evening. I'm not going to propose Sunday. What do you got doing?
Tuesday afternoon, later.
What time?
Three-thirty-ish, four?
I'm okay.
On what, the twenty-fourth?
Okay, how is that set with you?
That doesn't work for me, but I'll leave you in good hands.
At least it would be there, yeah.
Okay. So what we will do is we will see you at the property site.
Three-thirty?
Okay, so, all right, are there any butters who would like to speak?
I do, I do request for a site visit, though. If it's, if it does snow, if we can have at least a plow run through the back so we can get in the back to view Mr. Jean's concern about the retaining wall would be.
Good point.
Helpful.
Okay, any butters present who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Any butters to the property present who'd like to speak in favor of? Any butters present who'd like to speak against this application? Any butters to speak against this application? Any interested parties to speak for or against this application? Any interested party to speak for or against? No one to speak? Okay. Randy, any other comments? Mel?
No.
In the front of the building, is this grassed area, is this?
Yes.
It's grassed currently? Do you intend on putting any kind of shrubbery or anything along the wall just to break up the, where you, you're going to residential use versus a commercials, office type, type use?
We do not propose that right now, but that's something that we normally do, but we don't have, we're not proposing adding any, any plans right now.
I have a question. I always see, well, I see two exit areas, and one in the corner and one in the middle to the rear. Will there be any entrance? Oh, I see it now.
There's two in the front.
I missed, I didn't, I didn't see those. Okay, my question's answered, thank you. Okay, no, there's nobody to comment?
Will there be any, I'll, I'll call it tenant public areas, you know, place where they have a, you know, a barbecue or anything like that? Is there going to be any kind of amenities like that? I mean, it's pretty tight, it's pretty.
The site is too small for that. It is possible in the, in the second phase, but again, we, we do need to employ engineering to figure it out, if this structure can be safe and under what conditions.
Your back green area, does that grade go up real quick, or is that relatively flat, or?
No, it does go up.
It goes up?
There's actually a retaining wall here.
Okay. Uh, you know, I'm just trying to see if there's a, a place where you could create that kind of amenity, especially where you're seeking market rate, you try and.
We would like to, but we don't see.
Okay, I think viewing the site will answer a lot of questions.
For sure.
We'll be able to see much better. Okay. Anything else?
Um, no, I don't think so.
No?
No.
Okay.
Continue to march? Continue to march?
That is correct.
We should ask for permission for an extension.
All right. We're going to be in, meeting in March. We're going to check the date for an extension if needed. Are you open to giving us an extension?
Oh, no, this is special permit. It goes until the hearing closes. After the hearing close, so we're good.
We're not going to close it until after we view your property.
Yep.
Okay. Nothing else?
Nope.
Then we'll see everybody on Tuesday the twenty-fourth, three-thirty.
Okay.
And then we'll leave this case open, and we'll move forward to the next case.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just put this back together.
Much better than the last time, I think. It was very much helpful to see the plans and stuff.
We can send the electronic format of that drawing if it's helpful to you.
It's more reliable.
The PDF. Yeah, the PDF.
You can send it to Mariella for the file, that'd be.
Yeah, I, I remember.
Yeah, awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Here, I'll give you this one. Okay, the next question, best case, is O one, O one, two, O two, three, special permit, twenty Graham Street to convert accessory building to a. 20 Graham Street to convert accessory building to a fifth dwelling unit.
Good evening gentlemen, just gonna get my computer.
Good evening Attorney Tree.
Just gonna get my laptop and connect to the display.
Do you wanna do the other continued plan, the other continued case first before we hear a new one?
We'll do that.
Yeah, why don't we do that? I think the gentleman's been waiting a long time here.
In lieu of uh, the agent for 20 Graham Street that'll set up her presentation etcetera, we're just gonna move forward on the next case in the essence of time. Case number 1102 2022, a continuance special permit, 440 West Broadway to construct operation of a wireless community, communication facility, 150 foot, and I think ultimately with the antenna it'd be 156, 56 feet. A tall monofall style tower, uh, inside a 50, 50 fence in compound. Agent or attorney for 440 West Broadway.
Again, Francis Parisi, an attorney representing the applicant Vertex Towers LLC. We are here tonight seeking a special permit and no variances, which is unusual in my world, for a telecommunications facility.
We appreciate that.
Uh, nine times out of 10, we require variances. Your bylaw was um, very comprehensive, but we were able to find a property that met all the requirements of the bylaw. Since the last public hearing, uh, we answered a few of the, I believe, we tried to answer a few of the questions. I provided a draft, I, I, I provided the memorandum of lease and the easement agreement showing the right to use the property. The board asked us for a certificate of insurance, we're amply insured, um, and, and provided certificate of insurance. Board asked us for removal cost estimate, uh, which we provided, and it's based on engineering standards and a, a draft removal bond, and uh, I think it would be an appropriate condition of approval that we produce an original bond with the application for the building permit. There was some question with respect to some of the existing site maps, um, and showing that there's no um, opportunity to co-locate on existing structures in the area, and we provided more maps. And most importantly, we provided a very detailed airspace obstruction analysis showing that the tower does not require any kind of lighting under
FAA.
FAA regulations. So I, I, I think that was all the board asked us for. We would uh, ask that the board approve the special permit so we can move on to the uh, the, continue the project. And just so you know, we're not done yet. We have very extensive federal due diligence that we have to do as well. We've started that process, but it takes an immense amount of time. Because we're so heavily federally regulated, we have a very extensive environmental impact analysis. And environment is a big word. We have to make sure we don't have any impact on um, plant species and wildlife and Native American resources and things like that. And that, that process takes several months to complete as well, but we can't really do it, we can't finalize it until we get through the local permitting process.
Attorney Parisi, you just mentioned that, and um, there was a case earlier this evening for a special permit for solar field, pretty close to actually to this parcel. I mean, you mentioned some of the other regulatory, I don't wanna say hoops you have to jump through, but regulatory applications, approvals you must have to maintain. Typically, how long does that take?
Uh, long and getting longer. Um, uh, one of the biggest impediments is we have to make sure we don't have any impact on Native American resources. We're in a paved parking lot, so we're not anticipating any. Our, our real estate specialists are trained to look for telltale indicia. However, we have to notify about 30 Indian tribes, and um, they have a time period to respond. And they used to ask for money, and the uh, the federal government said you can't ask for money, so the Indian tribe stopped responding. So now we have to wait out the time period and then um, solicit approval from the FCC. Uh, so that takes about 90 days.
So, but I mean, I guess I'm, I'm thinking more in years. You know, we've had this, this gentleman with a solar array farm that has come back to us. Today, I think it was the third time for another extension.
We, um...
I kinda like to avoid you, you know, nice of you to visit, but if we don't have to see you next year...
No, no, we uh, we anticipate if we were to get the special permit this evening, we would anticipate um, completing the process by the end of the string and um, having the construction done by the end of the year. That's kind of our general cycle.
Okay, so you'd, you'd fit in with a time, reasonable timeframe. We're not talking years worth of permitting potential.
No, 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 definitely not. Uh, it's, and, and it's more just um, regulatory hoops. It's not really permitting so much as we have to send a letter to the local um, historic district commission, for example, and they have 30 days to respond. And we kinda know that there's no historic impact, but they have a right to respond. So we, and we can do what we call desktop analysis to make sure that there's no issues here, but...
Do you, do you like a, has this materials had 21E type soil boorings?
We do, we do um, phase one studies.
Phase one, just phase one, yeah.
And, and rarely do we get requests for phase two. This one, because there's an existing, that's where we tend to get them, is where there's auto activity. It looks to us like a pretty clean facility and been run very well, but uh, you know, some auto facilities automatically get a phase two. But uh, we don't, but, because what we build is just a 50 by 50, so they just do a very limited environmental impact.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you for that, and you sort of answered a few things I have here, but first of all, I did contact the two individuals, Beth Gresham and Mr. Rice from Conway and Ashfield. They gave great recommendations, one for your consultant and for your company, that they have found no problems, everything went very smooth. So, I think based on that, I mean, the board would consider at this point not engaging an, a consultant to do this because they, they came back with uh, very positive comments to me. And uh, sort of recommended, said, you know, go ahead and do it, but uh, we can't work quite off of that. But I think what they came back with, they found, there was no exceptions from any of the reports from the consultant, etcetera.
I appreciate that. We're, we're, we're pretty conscious of all the different regulations we've um, learned from our mistakes, so to speak. And uh, we, we do a pretty good job, and, and our real estate people are very good.
And that's what uh, Ms. Gresham said, is because of all the regulations, if you don't comply, you mess up, it either ends the project or delays significantly in time, etcetera. So, uh, based on that, but after my discussion with her, and I spent some time going through the ordinance, uh, and I'll share with you, I'll, I'll give you a copy after, but I came up with, because I think the board has been looking very, very favorably, at least during our discussions on this, with, uh, I call them 10 conditions, and I'll read them, and I'll ask for some input from you as I read them. And I'll, and let me give you a copy, 'cause I have an extra copy.
Perfect, thank you so much.
And I even typed it so it can be read. Okay, you ready? Condition one is, as an infrastructure developer, the petitioner shall provide evidence of an executed lease for a ten, antenna space with at least one duly licensed wireless carrier to the Gardener Zoning Board of Appeals and the Building Commissioner prior to the issuance of the building permit to construct a wireless facility.
That would be acceptable, yes.
Two, the petitioner shall provide evidence, confirmation from the Gardener Conservation Commission that the proposed wireless communications facility does not violate the Wetlands Protection Act. You sort of addressed that as it's gonna be looked at anyway.
The only, uh, I don't believe we have any impact on wetlands, I'm just looking, uh, getting confirmation from the Conservation Commission is the issue.
It would be a request of determination.
An RDA, exactly. And um, I, I guess we could do that, yes.
Okay, number three, the petitioner shall certify that they possess all necessary license and permits to operate and complies with all federal state requirements to operate this wireless facility. So I mean, and you'll see further down, you're gonna provide some permits, etcetera. Four.
Can we stop right there? I got a question. So, is, you will be, or your, your company or Vertex Towers will own the tower and lease out space to the individual carriers?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, I just wanted to, well, mine, make sure that this reads...
Annual maintenance inspection report shall be submitted to the Building Commissioner and the Gardener's EBA, and no later than 30 days after completion. The 30 days is just 30 I put in because you've gotta complete them by a certain time, and we're not looking, they could be completed six months later.
Understood.
Is that a reasonable request?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. Petitioner shall submit an executed certificate of liability insurance for 2023, before the Building Commissioner issues a building permit. The petitioner will submit annually a current certificate of liability insurance to the Building Commissioner and his EBA. Cause the sample you put in your package, I saw the maturity date...
It was about to expire.
It was a month ago.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that.
That's okay.
Uh, we, we do, we did, I mean, you know, but uh, we'll certainly give one to the building inspector.
Alright, six, the petitioner shall deliver an executed tower structural equipment removable bond in the minimal amount of 35,000 with an escalation clause of 15% for each 10-year lease extension following the initial lease term of 10 years.
That's fine, yes sir.
What is that? Can you explain that to me? So in 30, $35,000 for 10 years, and after, on year 11, it goes up 15%?
Right.
Okay, can we tie it, instead of doing a, a straight percentage, I, I think I'd like to tie it to some index. Not CPI, but some other type of index. ENR maybe, or something?
The problem with that, and we do this all the time with leases and bonds, you have to be unbelievably specific, cause there's a lot of indexes. CPI is an umbrella. You gotta say CPI for gardener, that only applies to housing, and it gets effort. So, uh, you know, um, we have found that uh, flat formulas like this are far more effective than CPI.
I understand, but 15...
I'm not gonna ask him to figure out what the TPI is.
I've seen construction costs go up 15% this year.
15% doesn't seem like nearly enough to me after a 10-year period. We're talking about less than $5,000.
If you're looking uh, in the short term, I completely agree with you. Over the last 10 years, inflation hasn't been more than 1% for nine of those 10 years, and it's been substantial for the last year, I, I agree. So, um, you know, we think, I, I would, I, I do believe that 15% every 10 years is adequate, based on history. Notwithstanding the...
Would.
And now, I've heard actually, I was just listening today on the way up here, that uh, you know, inflation is actually back down under 2%, but when you ca, for the month, but when you calculate it for the year, it's...
It's like 6.2.
But it's also, the point two is, if there's work needed to be done on the access roads of the facility, most likely through the lease, uh, we'll call it Chair City LLC, whatever, and Vertex Towers is gonna fix the road, etcetera. So normally, you're not going after the bond just because there's a tree down. You're gonna fix it out of your pocket anyway. It's only if you don't do it.
It's only, it comes abandoned.
I'm noticing that there's two bonds, and the first, the um, removal bond is a reasonable request, and we would agree with that. The performance bond for the maintenance cost of the access driveway. I, I'm gonna tell you, we never do that. One, cause it's hard for us to get them. It's not like, um, performance bonds are really done for subdivisions. And when they start the subdivision and you get a performance bond and finish it, ours, you know, we're a, a very long-term facility, we can't get a performance bond. And in this particular case, we're driving over the, uh, the parking lot of the auto dealership. So we're really actually not even creating an access driveway. Most times we do, uh, but uh, in this particular case, we don't. So I, I, I don't think um, condition number seven is appropriate. Condition number six, very appropriate, I'm not sure.
The number, well, let's go back to number seven, because um, and, and I agree, the performance bond may not be um...
The appropriate vehicle?
The appropriate avenue to, for this, but you know, say for instance, you know, the dealership closes and, and it becomes, you know, something else. And you're using, yes, you have a right of way over their property coming from, I think Manka Drive or something, right, wasn't it?
Yeah, except for, this is an unmanned facility.
I understand, but they're still potentially doing maintenance, you gotta inspection, annual inspections.
Yeah, but I guess my, my point is, you know, you get performance bonds routinely for subdivisions because they're building a public road eventually. And in this particular case, it's private property, uh, uh, no one's gonna access it. So, you know, uh, uh, for the maintenance driveway, we maintain it, but bonding that is almost impossible because we're really not doing anything. And so, uh, you know, uh, we've, people have asked us for performance bonds in, in people sitting in similar positions to you, and we just can't get them because they, it's not, the, uh, we're, we're just building a driveway. And even, even in the, uh, unusually, we're, we're going into Hubbardston, and we're just driving across a field. We're not doing anything. We're just driving across a field. So, uh, in this particular case, we're driving across asphalt, so I'm not sure I can bond that.
Okay, so is there another approach to this? I'm looking if there's any damage, or was looking if there's any damage.
I was thinking if Salvador closed and something else went there, they...
Again, it, it's private property. If, um, if there was damage to the public right-of-way, maybe? But you know, we're not, uh, but that's no different than any other project.
Yeah, if you can't get access to it.
You didn't ask the previous owner to bond, the previous applicant to bond damage to the public right-of-way. You know, uh, if there was any damage, you'd have enforcement acting. If there's any non-compliance with the zoning ordinance, you'd have zoning enforcement action. So, it's just a, we're on private property.
Are you, are you doing anything with Salvador in terms of a right-of-way?
No, we've, um, basically, we have an access easement. It's basically a dotted line that goes from our 50 by 50 to the public right-of-way.
Understand.
But we're not doing anything. We're not doing any, uh, because it's already asphalted.
But you're not gonna have, if, to Randy's point, if they close and the next owner says, you, you can't do that anymore?
When we build an access driveway, it's really a construction driveway because we have to bring in cranes and concrete for the foundation of the tower and stuff like that. After that, it's an unmanned facility, and so nobody drives over it.
No, I understand that, but you still have to have access.
I know, I know, but, but uh, they drive over, um, uh, drive up mountains. Uh, you spoke to Mr. Rice, we're driving up a utility easement. It's, it's 1,000 feet up in a utility easement, and, and we are, are, as an industry confronted with going in incredibly difficult access locations. And so the, the people that would have to do maintenance or any kind of upgrade or respond to malfunctions are used to dealing with pickup trucks, or, we don't snowplow. So, um, if Mr. Salvador started to stop snowplowing, we would just either hike in or bring a snow vehicle. Because uh, if you saw the plate, thing that we're building in uh, um, Hubbardston, we come off a, a, a public right-of-way to a small driveway, and then we're just going through a vacant field. And uh, you know, we'll, we'll build a small gravel driveway to make sure the crane doesn't get stuck in the mud. But after that, we don't, we don't...
I hear all that, but there's still, the basic tenet here is, if that property is sold and you're denied access...
We wouldn't be denied it. We, we have a legal right to get to the public right-of-way. If they...
That's what I was asking.
If, yeah, and we showed that, I provided...
Goes out to Manka Drive.
Yeah, exactly. So we have a right to go to Manka Drive. If for some reason they sold it, it gets sold subject to our lease, and if a new property owner were to redevelop it, they'd have to deal with us and renegotiate some sort of...
That was my question. Didn't wanna launch on all that other things.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we, we definitely have a legal right, and we don't care. Like I said, uh, we, we require access for construction. After that, it's, it's, um, if the, if the new landowner said, go to, um, what's it, Kinsey Street or whichever the...
Kinsey Drive, yeah.
Yeah, they'd go to there, we'd say, fine. And uh, so we have multiple options, because it's frontage on multiple public right-of-way.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject?
Yes, you may.
We have multiple salt towers in the city, and I'm constantly getting building permits and electrical permits to change the antennas. Are you telling us that that doesn't happen to yours?
No, it does.
Then don't we need access?
What's that?
Then don't we need access?
Something more than a pickup truck.
You don't need access, we do.
Understood, but the crane that comes to change the antennas needs to get in there, right?
Right. And, but again, this is private property, that if, if Salvador or the subsequent landowner doesn't maintain it, that's between us and Salvador, not between us and the town.
So you have it deeded right-of-way then?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay. That's good.
Okay.
And I provided that, that was in the supplemental package. And this.
It's mentioned in the lease, I think, you know, certain easements, egress, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, and then that's, the second is all the easement language. Because he owns multiple properties there, so we have the lease for the subject property, then the easements over all the other abutting properties.
All right, I think we'll waive that. Number eight, the petitioner shall submit annual certification to noting continuing compliance with the standards of the FCC, Federal Aviation Administration, and the American National Standards Institute. The building commissioner and his EBA, if any expenses incurred will be at the responsibility of the petitioner. That's pretty much pulled right out of the ordinance.
Correct, yep.
Nine, the petitioner shall allow adequate space on the tire tower for a minimum of four carriers. Now, I put that in there because I think in your original presentation.
Yeah.
You said there'll probably be four carriers.
Exactly. We designed it for four carriers, and so we, we agree to that condition, yes.
I remember you had your height on each one of them, but I felt it was, we felt it was important to put in that it will be for the four that you presented. Number ten, if any provider of performance surety bonds issues a notice of termination of surety, the provision, petitioner must provide a replacement bond in the same amount or greater if required, and I have effective twelve oh one a.m. the day following the effective day of cancellation.
That's fine. That's all right.
That's all that the board came up with, and I'll ask my members if they gave any additional thought.
No, no, I'm good.
The only other thing on number seven about that bond for twenty-five, the cover, in terms of, we didn't use the word performance bond, of the establishment of an account for maintenance in the amount of twenty-five, and it just sits there.
Again, like I said, the bond for removal is something that we get. I don't know that I can get a performance bond or anything. And like I said, the maintenance of the access roadway is on private property, so why does this board care?
Oh, we just wanna make sure it stays in good repair and that there's no burden that ends up with the city of facing a.
But again, you providing, the city provides me access on public right-of-way. Access over the private land is my problem.
So the, okay, can we go? Yeah. I'm still having a little bit of intestinal upset over this fifteen percent escalator clause. I'm not sure how to best address it. Is the intent of the removal bond in the event that the tower remains vacant for more than one year, correct? I think that should be stated upfront.
I believe there's language in the zoning ordinance.
There is, and I was gonna get into that, too, that under the conditions of use and in the ordinance, we would incorporate the conditions of use, which is within the ordinance. Yeah, it's a condition G three. All unused wireless communication facilities or parts thereof accessory facilities which have not been used for more than one year shall be dismantled and removed at the owner's expense.
Right. And quite frankly, I don't, it's never happened in my world because we're still a relatively young industry. But if we were to disappear, I think the thought is that you'd have a removal bond to remove it.
I'm just wondering if it'd be thirty-five thousand, but after ten years have another estimate performed by a professional engineer for the update, the removal costs.
I think that is an appropriate answer.
That we can just change the wording in this with you.
You know.
From an engineer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We provided a letter, and it's all based on engineering standards. They can say a dumpster costs this, and removing a hundred feet costs this. So, but we could certainly provide an update to that every ten years.
Okay.
And I think that's, I think that would be.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
And I'm okay.
Quite frankly, I think I like that better than an escalator.
You know, tower structural equipment removal bond or surety, you know? That way, you know, should they?
There is, and in the package, he's got an actual.
Yeah, we get these bonds routinely.
Routinely, okay.
There's an actual bond that's for removal and.
My thought is, you try and go after a bond, it's virtually impossible to go and collect on a bond.
I agree with you. And it's never happened in my world.
It's still a young world, too.
Right, I agree. And, but we signed a very long-term deal with the Salvadore's. We anticipate being there a very long time.
Yeah.
But you're right, it's not forever.
We've tried in the past using bonds, attach bonds to go after, you know, developers that have walked off and left, you know, development subdivisions and disarray or whatever.
But, you know, I would think from the town's perspective, if they're building a town road, like the last applicant, or building a road that's eventually gonna be a town road, then the town has interest in that. Whether he clears a lot and never builds a house, the town doesn't really care.
Yeah, point being, it's hard to attach a bond.
It is. I know, but from the banking industry, and I was in a lot of those construction jobs, we would get bonds all the time and, you know, certain things, especially for roadways and, you know, finishing them. It's a battle if you have to collect on it, and sometimes you just pass and don't and just move forward, but then you own the project, so you had to complete it yourself. But I would rather have something in there.
I am.
And I like your wording about ordinance with having an engineer provide.
Updated, updated.
Yeah, I certainly agree with that.
So that's the, the only one we'll change or we'll waive is, we'll call it number seven. And that's because it's deeded property, et cetera.
Yep, I understand.
So those are the conditions the board would consider putting forth to you and to Vertex?
And we would agree to all that, sir.
Okay, any further comments? Randy?
No, I don't think so. I mean, he put together a nice package and answered all our questions.
It was a good package.
Thank you. Appreciate the effort, for sure.
A lot to go through, but it answers pretty much most of the questions.
We just built a tower in Chutesbury. We're almost done with the federal regulations in Hubbardston. We'll be building that in the spring. And Mr. Rice in Asheville was a bear to deal with, actually. I'm quite surprised he said something nice about me. We have two towers in Conway going up. We've been focused a lot west of eighty-nine, Buckland, Asheville, two thousand, Conway, Rowe, Heath, so we're very busy.
I'm just curious, out of my own ignorance, I guess, with the 5G, the towers have to be much closer, I guess, now than?
Yes, what's happening is that as they open up 5G, 3G's getting dismantled.
Dismantled.
Right, and so, so even in places like my house, for example, I had great coverage. And then on January first, I don't have coverage in my basement anymore. And so that's why we're building more and more towers. 5G means a lot of different things. It's really not a, it's, different people call it different things. At some point, you're gonna have driverless cars. And do I think you're gonna have driverless cars in gardener? Probably not. But in Boston, where you have infrastructure between buildings and telephone poles to have that capacity? You know, I don't, you know, what 5G is gonna do in Boston is different than what it's gonna do in gardener. So it's, you know, maybe the urban cores, you know, downtown.
Yeah, you know, it's my understanding that just the range of a 5G is much smaller versus.
5G is using higher frequency on the spectrum, which, the higher the frequency, the shorter the.
Shorter the range.
Shorter the range, exactly.
The lady from Asheville, she did mention about one of the towers. She says, actually, it's going up a mountain.
Yes, it was a good spot. It's actually quite visible. That one was more visible than, and it took them some time to accept that, but they, it was a good site. But the access road for that is like a thousand feet long or fifteen hundred feet long up a hill and through a utility. Took us two years to negotiate with National Grid to have the right just to drive up the access road and.
Okay. If there are no further questions, you wanna move for a decision on this?
Absolutely, yep.
Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? And I would like to say that motion to approve this, if we do vote in favor, would contain, and I talked about.
Nine unit.
Ten conditions, we'll bring it down to nine.
Nine conditions.
And reword number six. Okay, so all in favor with the conditions so noted? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Application approved. And you heard me talk about the timelines, you know the timelines.
Although, one thing you said, I'm not sure it's correct. You said it's like hourly and to the previous happen. If you were to stamp it on, for example, tomorrow, the clock is twenty days from tomorrow. And as long as you bring it to the town clerk by the close of business on the twentieth day. And now with, you know, electronic filing, you can file in Superior Court after business hours, and they still stamp it that day. So I wasn't sure that was correct, that if you stamp it at twelve oh one, you had to have it at twelve oh one by the twentieth day. I think it's by the close of business on the twentieth day.
Well, I know in a court, number of years ago, we, the individual who was appealing did lose it because he came in a couple hours after this timestamp.
Really? I've never heard that before. We aren't a hundred percent popular with what we do. So we have our share of litigation.
Turn the globe.
Yeah.
Well, no one tonight has said we're gonna sue you.
We've never had.
Not yet.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. A great presentation. I think it was a learning curve for everybody. So appreciate it. And we'll put this away. And we'll go on to our next case.
What is, give me that one. Get it off the table.
Okay.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case before the board is oh one oh one two oh two three. Special permit, twenty Grand Street to convert accessory building to a fifth dwelling.
Unit.
Agent returning.
Twenty-three.
Good evening. Nice to see everybody here today. So we have before you an application for a special permit for twenty Grand Street. This is an application for a special permit to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use on a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And what that means in real terms is that we are going to look to convert an accessory building on the property into a single one-bedroom unit. The main building on the property is a four-unit multifamily. And I'm gonna go through with you the lot, the project, some interesting things that happened with the main building, the parking, and then we'll review the special permit criteria. So we do, this is in the Com one district. What we're asking for permission for is just the special permit for the conversion of the accessory building. When this was submitted, the permits had not been, yet been issued on the main building. There was a fire in the main building in March. And that has required a lot of interior renovation. We were uncertain at that point in time whether the building commissioner might require finding that we were permitted to do that renovation, staying within the same footprint, rebuilding after a destructive event. But the permit has issued, and I believe that he's satisfied. So we don't require a finding from the board on that provision. Just looking at the accessory unit. This is a project where we're planning to provide a fully adequate off-street parking, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's a tight area, right? I think this is the third project I've had on a building in this area, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is a picture of the building, the main building you see in front. And if I can be a pointer, what you'll see right here is the little one-story accessory building in the back that we're looking to convert. This is located at twenty Grand Street, which is right there in the heart of gardener. It is one block off of Parker and just in front of the empty lot where Mackey's building was. This is the Com one district. We had some controversy as I was submitting the application. The assessor's card says SFR one. When I was looking at the maps, it is not. And I mistook with the color for, I think, industrial one. But we did confirm through the building commissioner that this is Com one district. We are, as you can see, we are right on the border with GR three. This is a district where the multifamily use is allowed by special permit in both districts. The minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet or twenty-five hundred per unit, which at five would still come out to ten thousand, I think twelve-five. Eighty feet minimum frontage, ten foot minimum setback. And this is what you have before you. You have an eighty-three hundred square foot lot. You have ninety-three feet of frontage. The main dwelling, which is right here, is a four-unit multifamily. The footprint is thirteen sixty. The gross living area, it is three levels, is twenty-nine ninety. And then the accessory building in the back is four hundred and thirty-two square feet. So it is undersized as far as the area goes. The frontage is sufficient. The setbacks are definitely not being met, so. But again, this is a structure that was built in nineteen sixteen of longstanding, and the accessory building has been there for a substantial period of time, at least enough to have section seven protection as a ten-year structure. So at least that, because I can document that in photos going back. Not sure if we predate zoning. We looked at what the actual parcel usage is in this neighborhood, just because we're gonna look at as part of the special permit criteria as something that is consonant with the character of the neighborhood. This neighborhood is primarily larger multifamilies. So we do have two, two families right here, one above the other. And this, we did put a table in of the usage of the surrounding parcels, and that was in exhibit A in the package that you received. You can see some purple in here. And what I'm gonna say that, this is not commercial as in retail. This is, it is a larger multifamily building, being operated as a commercial enterprise, not that it is a commercial lot.
Multi-family, kind of, yeah.
Right, right. But as you can see, there are no single-family homes around here. You have two, two families, and other than that, it is higher-level multifamily dwellings. The project that we're gonna do is, again, conversion of this building. So this building sits at the rear of the property. It was formally used as a salon, and it is currently used for storage. And what we would like to do is convert it to a single-bedroom dwelling unit. There is existing electrical, water, and sewer to. There is existing electrical, water, and sewer to this because of its prior use as a salon. So there's a bathroom inside. And the interior conversion would really not take that much infrastructure in addition to what's presently there. The plan is not to have any conversion of the exterior of the building. So not exceed the footprint, not change the appearance. The roof is in good condition. This is a conversion that should take place within the existing structure. We have shown on the side, a little bit of the driveway and the parking on the sides of the building. There's a little, a large spot on the right of the building. And then in, on the side of the building, there's another spot that's used right now. So this parking plan is in your packet as Schedule F, Exhibit F. And what it shows is four parking spaces. Four parking spaces is not adequate to what we're proposing. We are proposing the additional one-bedroom. And then we are also going to have, the four units are gonna be two three-bedroom units, a studio, and a one-bedroom, right?
One bedroom, one, two bedroom, or two bedrooms?
Two bedrooms, okay. At any rate, we need seven spaces. Don't have it on the lot. And while there is a provision about existing parking with conversion of a pre-existing non-conforming, my clients went ahead and bought the part, the lot next door. So the lot to the right is called Thirty-four Frankfort Street.
That's Franklin Street, and it's, that's, on that map, it's shown as a Gary LaBelle property. Right, correct?
Correct, correct. And so my clients bought it from Mr. LaBelle. That lot has an existing paved parking area. And there used to be a house on that lot, which also burned down. So that is now a grassy area.
Very big one.
Yeah.
Big multifamily.
And this is just a little summary of what we're doing with the conversion of the building. But that exists, that next-door lot, which I'm gonna get to in a couple slides, is going to provide more than ample parking for the usage of this building. I did also want to address, there was some question that was, has arisen about the boundary line and whether this structures over the boundary line. The, the Graz engineering plan that is in your packets does show the boundary line, and I have, I don't know whether it's too far away. I don't wanna delay us. The boundary line is very close, but the building is not over it. In that Graz engineering plan, you'll see a line with some Xs on it, that's the chain-link fence. And then you'll see a straight line, and then you'll see the blocks of the retaining wall. And that straight line in between is the boundary line.
So this assessor's map, that is, that's not accurate?
Assessor's maps are not reliable in close cases, and this is a close case. So I would say that the assessor's map is not reliable. I am sorry, I don't know why.
There's a note on Graz's plan that says property lines are compiled from existing plans and deeds. He didn't do a physical survey on site?
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna say that he went there, located, and shot the lines. What I will say is that there's an existing chain-link fence that has been there since before that building in front of it was taken down. And that then there is a supporting wall.
But that doesn't necessarily denote the property line.
Neither does the assessor's map.
I understand. So there's no intent to survey the property?
You know, my clients would certainly shoot the line if we needed to do that, to ascertain that.
The engineer did go to the property.
They did go to the property?
Yes, several times. Just for the parking.
For the parking.
Yeah, doesn't, I mean, his note doesn't say instrument survey or anything, just compiled.
Check what the attorney did to the closing, because typically he'll do a survey for the bank.
It's, servings are taped for mortgage plans are usually just taped surveys. You know, if we approve something like, if we approve something like, if we approve something like this, I think I'd, you know, wanna look at a potential condition that the survey be in, on this line anyway, instrument survey.
Oh, absolutely.
I agree.
Just to confirm, because you don't wanna do an improvement on somebody else's property.
So I, I'm also gonna say that this structure has certainly been there beyond the twenty-year period of the, of adverse possession. And whether or not it's over the line doesn't matter at this point because even if it is over the line, this property owner owns that land and that structure on it by adverse possession. So I will offer that. I understand the concern. But we are talking about an eight-foot, eight-foot block wall here. And the possibility between the chain-link fence that is maybe six inches?
Three feet.
Three feet?
I measured it, I have pictures.
No, no, from the?
From the, from the wall to the building?
From the wall to the building.
So is there a little overhang from the roof? Yes, probably six inches.
There is. Whether or not it is over the boundary line, and I would, I would say to you that the engineering plan is much better evidence than the assessor's maps.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not taking any credence to the assessor's map and this kind of fine thing. I guess, I'm wondering if that retaining wall was an old, you know, foundational wall for the Mackey building?
It's not a retaining wall. It was the foundation for the Mackey building.
It was the foundation.
I was proud of that demolition. It was the, it was the foundation for the Mackey building.
So there may, there may indeed be some kind of offset to that, if that was the foundation wall.
For what it's worth, I would agree with Attorney Tree wholeheartedly, that, and especially with this entire renovation is interior to the property and there's nothing going on on the outside. I don't think, I don't think it's an issue. The reason that the question was raised was because of the assessor's map. The assessor's map is almost always a two or three foot one way or another, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm surprised it's even that good.
Well, I may be being generous.
All right. I do apologize that we're just not connecting technology-wise today.
Looks like you're having a problem with the Wi-Fi.
I do.
Check your mobile.
Oh, yes. No Wi-Fi network's found.
I guess your phone, your phone.
Are you using a hotspot and not the city's Wi-Fi?
We're using, I'm using the city's Wi-Fi, or I was. And now it's not showing up as available anymore.
Not unusual that it goes out.
There we go.
Somebody didn't put a quarter in the Wi-Fi meter, that's why.
Construction couldn't connect last week.
No.
Goodness.
My phone just connected.
We just, it just came up again.
And now it says no internet connection. The Wi-Fi is down. Do you have a hotspot?
I can do a hotspot if we need to.
Oh, what you're gonna show us anyway is in your package. Maybe we can just walk through the package?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna take up too much time.
My four-legged friends are gonna wanna go out pretty soon.
So on the main building, as I said, we did have a fire on March the twenty-ninth. And that fire is gonna result in substantial reconstruction. We do have building permits pulled. We have people on site. Bless me. Thank you. Okay, so we had a fire, March twenty-ninth. And we are in this process of rebuilding. Looks substantially better before. We hope to put it back to what it was. Construction has started. We have about a ten-month timeline for construction to be completed.
Just curious, have you determined the cause of the fire?
The roofer.
The roofer?
Yeah, there was never really a question about what started it.
Wow.
This is just a look at the front lot when the building was there and currently. So we are currently looking at, this is the right side of the main building. And this is the existing access to the side lot that was purchased. All right, there are two plans in your packet of that side lot. And the reason I put two plans is because there is an existing right-of-way. And I wanted you to be able to view the fact that the right-of-way does not interfere with the parking. This, again, was our plan for the locus. So right here, we have the plan for the, a budding parcel that was purchased. And this is in.
Aye.
Thank you.
Exhibit A.
Of your packets.
These two fit.
Yep, so this right here is my client's property. That's Twenty Graham Street. This is Franklin, that was purchased. And you can see the right-of-way right here. The second plan is for the property above.
This corner here.
Right here. And you can see that the two rights-of-way are the same right-of-way shown on two plans. So the right-of-way was shared by the two properties. That's still used by people as a pass-through. There's no doubt. However, as the plan does show, we have a hundred and fifty-eight feet here. And even down here at the bottom, excluding the passway, we have twenty-two feet. So if I needed to put eight spaces there, that would be seventy-two feet long. It is half of the property. My client's plan is to pave all of the parking. There is an existing pavement right here. This is an overhead shot from Google Maps. So if this is the main building, and this is the next-door property, here is the existing pavement that is more than sufficient to provide three parking spaces. Certainly, I think that the plan would be that it would be more comfortable to provide four to five parking spaces on that side lot. We could provide ten parking spaces on that side lot, absolutely. But parking is gonna be ample, and it's gonna be off-street.
Spaces are, parking's a premium.
Yeah. So looking at that overall, I think that this project is appropriate. It is a minimal amount of expansion of the existing use. It is not changing the exterior of the building. It is not changing the footprint of either building. And at the end of the project, we're going to end up with more off-street parking than we started off with. I'm happy to go through the criteria. Thankfully, that is the end of the slideshow. And what I'd like to show you is, we had a couple, these are not in your packet, and they're not showing up.
I very much appreciate your organization of this.
Thank you.
You know, this is good, but Mr. Parisi had the same approach when he did for Vortex Towers.
Really?
Oh, yeah. He had it paged with the alpha, and then behind it was what you needed. So it wasn't just one hundred page.
Yeah. It gets to be too much when it's a very large packet like that. I am trying to show you pictures rather than a slideshow. And hopefully, I will do that right now. All right, so these are very basic, just a picture of the interior of the accessory building. And what I just tell you is that it's, it's existing. It's gonna be taken down to renovation on the inside. But there's nothing structural on the inside that needs to happen in order for the renovation to occur. All right. I can go through the special permit criteria. So first criteria is that the proposal shall be suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed and shall be compatible with the neighborhood character, existing uses, and other uses permitted by right in the same district. So this is, as I had shown and explained, in a family of higher-level multifamily dwellings. So we do feel that the five family will be consonant with the remainder of the buildings. And in addition, there are just, there's just no single-family homes. There is a proposal that there's going to be a park in front of this building. And that's the Mackey Park in the vacant lot where the Mackey's building used to be. Should we get to the point where that's gonna go forward and occur? I frankly think that this is only going to be beneficial to the residents of this and every other structure in that neighborhood because it will provide more green space for them. There is a very high wall, an eight-foot wall that was the foundation on one side. On the rear side of the property is the retaining wall for the public parking lot. And that's, again, a very tall wall. So you have residents that are lifted up from the activity that is occurring down below. So we don't see one as interfering substantially with the other. Should there be any music or other events going on at the park, they'll be occasional, and I don't, I don't foresee a great problem there. The proposal shall provide convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets, property, and improvements. We have existing sidewalks, and as you saw from one of the initial pictures, there is a sidewalk that comes out of the entrance of the accessory building and goes out into the front of the dwelling. So we think that there is adequate access there in addition to the driveway that encircles the main building and goes all the way to the back. On the supplemental parking, there is an existing pass-through that is not gonna change. It's, it's a right-of-way. And we are going to have more than adequate room for ninety-degree parking to go in, back out, and come out onto the main street without having to back onto a main street. So we think that's appropriate. There is gonna be some vehicular traffic during reconstruction, as I think is probably going on there right now. It's currently unoccupied. But again, we have that additional lot next door where we can park construction vehicles so that they don't inconvenience the neighborhood for that period of time. Most of the construction also is gonna be for the main building, so. The proposal shall provide adequate space for off-street parking, loading and unloading of vehicles and goods, products, materials, and equipment incidental to normal operation. We've gone through the parking at length. Proposal shall provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for the proper operation of the proposed use and disposal of sewage, refuse, or other waste products and methods of draining surface water. This is a project that is, already has water and sewer installed to the building. So it is fully serviced with public utilities. And the amount of green space on the subject lot is not going to decrease. subject lot is not going to decrease. Um, should we have a pavement of the entire lot, which I don't anticipate next door, just a little extra space for the parking. Um, there might be some additional runoff, but there is adequate, um, city drainage, um, at the street level. The proposal shall not constitute a nuisance due to air and water pollution, erosion, flood noise, odor, vibration, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features. Again, no, uh, exterior modifications. You're going to have one more one-bedroom unit. Um, there's going to be, of course, some dust, odor, and noise during construction. Um, that will occur primarily of the main building, but it's not gonna be of long duration. You're gonna have one more person who is going to annoy the other neighbors in the neighborhood. That'll be about it. Where this is, uh, has two sides of the property, where one is a park and one is a parking lot, and then we have a break between this building and the next one for that additional lot that was purchased for parking. The chances of additional annoyance to the neighborhood are, are truly small. Um, the proposal shall not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to a butters, vehicles, or pedestrians as determined by the Special Permit Granting Authority. Again, where we have the off-street parking and the opportunity to turn around before entering the roadway, um, you're not going to have any additional, um, difficulty managing traffic. You're gonna have another one to two cars a day going there. The proposal shall be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter. So, COM-1 does allow, uh, multifamily by special permit. GR-3, where the accessory parking will be, also allows a multifamily by special permit. So, because of that, we do not think this is substantially derogating. We are not asking to build on a new subsized lot. We are just asking to modify the use on an existing subsized lot. The proposal shall not have a significant detrimental impact on city services, tax base, and employment opportunities. Um, you will have some additional tax revenue because of the added value due to the unit. You have the potential for maybe one child in school. I don't see that, anything more than that would fit in a one-bedroom. In all likelihood, you are unlikely to have a child residing in this structure, um, and participating in school. The proposal is consistent with the city's community development plan or master plan. So, what I did was ident- identified objective H-2-5 and H-2-6, um, which are, in the community development plan, which are to rehabilitate, um, existing structures, make use of adjacent vacant and undersized lots, and I will say that parking lot is an undersized lot. It's not gonna be put to any other use. Um, and, uh, this renovation and, uh, the creation of accessory, uh, dwelling units within existing buildings, um, is consistent with those objectives, um, which is, again, reuse to create more housing without necessarily creating more buildings. Um, that, uh, completes the special permit criteria. Um, in sum, we do believe that this project is, uh, has benefits that are, uh, outweighing any potential negative effects. Um, and I'm happy to answer questions, but otherwise, thank the board for the time.
Mel Randy?
Well, so, the, um... Do you have a picture of the Mackey, well, say, the Mackey lot, the park side of that building? I, I, you know, I don't see it in the package. I was just trying to get my bearings here. I guess it goes back to, to what, you know, I know there's some, some renovation plans for that park.
There are.
I didn't know if, um, are those finalized yet, or do you know?
Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say finalized, but they're very close. Um, we had a statement from the planning director today. Did that, did you guys see that?
Um, came by email, but I don't, is it in the package?
I thought.
I didn't see any.
I thought that I emailed it to you.
Let me just check.
So, these are the pictures.
His only concern was to let the applicant know that there was a plan for a, for a stage there, and there would be some live entertainment there from time to time.
That's where my head was going, is it?
He had, he had no objection to this project, but he wanted to let the applicant know that that's the plan.
Are there windows?
And it's very close.
I just wonder if there are windows on that side of...
I would imagine so.
No, there are not.
There are not, on that backside.
Yeah, so there is...
So, I mean, that provides privacy and some...
The bottom picture here is from the Mackey's lot.
That's perfect.
And it shows that there are no windows.
Okay.
That's the second page in the picture's part of the packet.
Yeah, I think I had it on my email on my home computer.
I know I sent it to you guys. I sent it personal.
And I read it. You know, the, it said, "Does the applicant or make the applicant aware?" That there would be some entertainment venue, not descriptive, but just an entertainment activity.
Um, I did discuss that with my client, and she sees it only as a benefit, um, to the residents of this dwelling.
I don't have anything right now. I definitely would like to get it in the, you, on our viewing agenda.
Yep.
Good catch. Yeah, I'd like to get the viewing agenda. I don't know on Tuesday how fast we'll finish that.
It'll be after dark.
Yeah. So, we'd have to look another time.
It's gotta be done before the beginning of February.
Walnut, do you think it's, I mean, it's dark now till quarter, I mean, light till like quarter to five, ten minutes to five.
Yeah. We could run out of light, depending...
Do you wanna see if Walnut Street can move it to three o'clock?
Yeah, we could try that, see if we move that to three. That gives us almost two hours.
Yeah, that'd, that'd be enough.
Can I suggest that you do this one at three o'clock?
That's an option, too.
We can do that. Twenty-fourth, Tuesday afternoon.
Three o'clock, okay.
That's what they've got. Twenty.
Tuesday, the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, there's one thing I'd like to have clarified before we leave for the evening. Um, I believe you said there were seven parking spaces required for this. Was that including the, the accessory dwelling?
Yes, I, there were two units in the existing dwelling that required two bedroom, two spaces each.
Two, three bedrooms?
And then there was a studio and a one-bedroom.
Did you say a two-bedroom?
Yes. So, I counted ten.
There's a reduction for a single bedroom or studio.
But I think the first floor has a studio and a two-bedroom, or am I wrong?
Just the freestanding will just be a studio, not a one.
What's on the first floor?
A three-bedroom.
Okay. Let's, let's forget about the, the accessory structure then. What's in the four-family?
The four-family is a three-bedroom on the first floor and the third floor, so that's six bedrooms, and on the second floor, there'll be a one and a two-bedroom. So, that's a three more.
So, that, I get eight.
Okay.
I get eight when I do that map.
My notes said that we would have a studio and a one-bedroom on the second floor.
You've got plenty of room.
It was.
I'm not arguing that. I just want, for the record, I want it to be right. That's all.
Eight spaces.
Eight is required.
So, the plan's got modified. Okay. So, eight.
Thank you.
Okay. And when we view it, if you can do a quick, a quick layout where the spaces are gonna be, nothing fancy. Could be a rock, could be spray paint.
Definitely.
Just give us an idea. And I think when we're viewing it, we can see where they will enter and egress from and to which street they are heading for.
Yes.
And I really, as I think, will be able to answer a lot when we get to, to that one, too, and do it.
Yep.
And right now, it's thirty-seven degrees and partly sunny.
It's like living in Florida. All right. Randy, you have any more questions or comments at this point?
No.
Mel?
No.
No, I don't either, and I think we'll...
Open it up to the audience.
When we get there, I think we'll be able to answer some additional questions for us, so... Okay. Is any representative of the city to speak regarding this application?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Any abutists to the property to speak regarding this application? Now, this may get known that it was one individual. He would be, if any, an interested party, so we'll go right to the interested party. Any interested party to speak regarding this application?
I'm just here for the entertainment.
Wow. Okay.
Okay.
So, there are no interested parties. There's no abutters, and no, no objections, so, uh, we're going to, is it okay to continue this case? It will be to march. And same thing if, well, a special permit, we have plenty of time, but if we run short on time, we will ask for an extension if needed.
Well, this is special permit, so it's ninety days of closing.
Okay. Thank you further. All right, so I'm not closing this case. Uh, you're free to go for this evening, and then I have some correspondence to take up with the board, so we'll take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a set of minutes from November fifteenth. Uh, I'm sure everybody has seen that we finally have our group together, so I need a motion to approve.
Some of seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we'll sign that. The other set of minutes, it requires Dave Ante to be here. So, we'll clear that next time we see him. Okay, the next item I have here is correspondence. Which one of the minutes, okay? All right, this correspondence, first one I'm looking at, and since we approved this case tonight, this is, uh, Cluck Street, and this really is, uh, just a compilation of documents from, uh, Peter Campabasso, and it was addressed to Mariella Negron, and Roland Jean, and it's from Peter, and it talks about the board meeting, uh, tonight, and, uh, he's conversing with John Flick. Uh, I did read his correspondence with John Flick and John Flick's response. That's, uh, one set of documents. And I have another from John Flick dated one-two, uh, to myself, Ray LaFawn of Verizon, and Peter Campabasso, and this is from John Flick stating that he's received documents from Peter Campabasso, and if you look at the documents, they are the same documents that I read tonight regarding the deeds and the concurrence. Then after that, it is a composition of, uh, the map that was presented tonight, uh, and also it's all the deeds and everything that's being, uh, addressed, the parcels, the Reed parcel, personal reps deed, uh, pretty much the documents that, uh, Peter Campabasso talked about over the last several meetings. And this one, the other correspondence, uh, we did do it. Randy read this. Here's the comments from Robert Oliver in the package. Then I have another package. This is four-forty West Broadway, and it's, um, to Mariella from my, myself, Ray LaFawn, and really what it is, is it's an email that I sent to, uh, Beth Gersham and Alan Rice, the references, uh, the attorney Parisi provided us, just inquiring about the, uh, consultant and their interaction with the consultant and any issues with Vertex. That's what that document is, and then behind it is just really a package that, uh, Parisi has just recently sent to us. So, that's, those are the documents I have as correspondence.
I think just the correspondence can go in the relevant, uh, case file.
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Just to be sure that it's all complete.
Yep. You want it now?
No, they're all over there. She has them all over there.
Okay. So, documents can move to the case files, and that's it. Do you have any comments? New business or anything?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.